Not that I need to call to order a board retreat, but it's officially started. There we go. So as the board knows, the public might not know this, but we had a bit of a change in our agenda. Originally, we had planned to have a two-hour training with Juliet's House around mandated reporting and what that meant. But with all things COVID, Juliet's House had not performed that training yet virtually. And as it got a bit closer, they recognized that they didn't feel prepared and ready for that. So I said, no problem, we can do that another time. And this gives us more time to discuss our goals and anything else. So I know that there were some sort of requests to change the agenda to have an sort of open dialogue regarding the events of the last week. And I don't know if anybody's interested in that, but if they are, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Yeah, we, if we're going to change agenda, we have to do it by majority vote. So I move that we add to the agenda discussion of the events of the past week.
Okay.
Okay, is there any discussion around that motion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And all those opposed? Oh, Rebecca, I couldn't see if you had your hand. Is that a yes or no? A yes, okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, well then let's move into that. If anybody has.
The reason I made that motion is that I think some events occurred that we probably needed to discuss. Some of the, we could have some discussion about the merits of the, of the resolution, which we all don't agree on necessarily. But the key thing for me was to make sure that we were still in a position as a board to work together as a team on the topics that we have to deal with. And there's been a couple of things in there that look like there might be stresses about that. And so I'm, that's where I'd like to start, but anybody could start anywhere they'd like.
That is a diplomatic way to put that, Ron, that there are some stresses. I, I guess my view at this point is, Brandy, those emails that you sent out about us were completely out of order, completely out of the spirit of the job of the board chair, and frankly racist. You, you basically said our ideas can't be right because we're just two angry white men defending our privilege. That is a very convenient way to dismiss our ideas and not have to take them seriously, not have to interact with them intellectually at all. It's very convenient. It's, it's very nice for you to be able to do that. I'm, I, I wish I had such a luxury. And honestly, someone who's willing to be racist against two of their fellow board members, I don't think you should be on the board anymore, Brandy. I think you should resign your seat, I really do.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say about that is that you felt her actions were out of line and also that they exhibit the racism that we're trying to stop with the resolution.
Yes.
Okay. In your email, Brian, you said something about the board agreement. Is there some particular way that you thought that, that those emails violated that board, the board superintendent working agreement?
Well, the, the, yes, I mean, first of all, how about no surprises? How about I'm going to email your constituents and I'm going to accuse you of being two angry white men who are trying to abuse a system of privilege. And I'm not going to give you a, I'm going to send it out and you, you know, wait till you see the email in your inbox. It's outside the spirit of no surprises. How about the idea that the, the board speaks with one voice? It's not Brandy Penner's voice, Brandy, you are not the voice of the board.
Okay, at this point you're yelling at her, I don't think that's going to help us. But the content of what you're saying is that the, is that there was no, they violated the amendment, we made the no surprises. And I got that part from the board agreement. And that, and you repeated the argument that it was unfair to call you racist in that situation. I might have missed something there because you're, you broke up a little bit.
Um, I, I don't know where, where you left off at.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll jump in there a little bit too. I, you know, for this whole first year being on the board, this has definitely been the, you know, the toughest challenge we've had. And I, I just was speechless when I read, Brandy, what you put in there. I was, I mean, there's many times in here where I've came away from board meetings going, you know, I don't like what we're doing, but you know, we talked about trying to, to stay together as much as possible. And I think the leadership through this is, is, is just been weak. And I like you personally, and I have nothing against you, we've chatted and everything, but I, I, I was just taken it back so far by that. And I, the very thing that we're talking about, whether we agree or not, and obviously we don't agree, all of us on what the, 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 the whole resolution is about. But we've totally lost our way as a board when it fundamentally comes to being able to listen to each other. And, and that went so far past anything that's healthy, that I can't see you standing on as board chair, even on the.
Okay, you're having a breakup problem too.
I, I hear him just fine, Ron, you might want to maybe try.
I can't, it might be mine, yeah, let me see if I get a different, I'll try a different, try on my phone, go ahead.
I just think we've, we've, we've gone way past, we, you know, obviously a very difficult time in our country and it's a difficult issue. And, and it's, it's okay to disagree, but it's not okay to have character attacks. It's not okay to, you know, when our constituents call in, they can be emotional. But on the board, we've talked about that, where we can't do that. And.
I mean, I disagree, I think emotions show the real, the true feelings of what is behind all the work.
All the work for what? And she attacked two board members. And I've had plenty of opportunities where if I'm going to put my, my emotions out there, I could have done the same thing with everybody on the board. This, this district staff, everything, but you, you have to check that in, we can't. If, if we let this go, if we, if we go down this path, we're going to lose, we're going to be right where Portland's at and where the world's at on this thing, it's out of control.
We are at that point, it is out of control.
That was a board, we cannot be that way as a school board, you cannot put personal.
Dave, Dave, you started it by, by neglecting to notify the, the board of what your statement was and what your problem was with the resolution. And by presenting, I still don't understand what you have against the resolution. I reread it today and there's nothing that states anything about Black Lives Matter organization. That whole statement had nothing to do with new, with the resolution from Newburgh School District. What do you have against that resolution?
The wording and the theme of that comes right out of OSBA, Rebecca. And when that, that OSBA and the OSBA Color Caucus stated in their resolutions that they are in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement.
But we didn't say that.
Our word.
And you, and you never brought it up to any board member be prior to the, you never brought it up to, to Dr. Morlock, you never brought it up to Brandy, that you had questions about this? And you refused to communicate with the board prior to the Thursday night meeting?
That's not true, I, I had Joe talk to Brandy, emailed back and forth, I talked to everybody.
Did you never send us a copy of your statement which you were going to give out on Thursday night? That was the first time I heard about, heard it. And I have written to you twice about it, asking you to please share what, what? You said there wasn't any action items, you didn't present any suggestions.
I put that out to Joe on Wednesday, when he said we could put that out in an email. And then he came back and said, no, we cannot do that.
But he asked you.
Every time I tried to talk to somebody, a couple of our constituents, two times, I got ahead, went mistakenly, got on email, trying to talk to those people, and both times got taken out at the knees. There is no way I'm going on Facebook, putting that thing out there. And with you, do you think the support was really healthy from our school board back towards that? The best way to present that was to read it. And our next meeting wasn't to the Tuesday coming up, it was Thursday because the special meeting was.
But why didn't you send it to us before the meeting? As, as Brian had asked on Thursday morning, he said, because due to the no surprise clause in our superintendent board agreement, and Joe asked you if we, if he could share it with the rest of us, and you never responded.
I told him, oh, I did respond to Joe, I told him no.
Why? We, we, we deserve to have a chance to read it prior to what, what you stated.
Why?
Because we're, we're an open board. If I have questions with, with some things that, that I read in the agenda packet, I contact Joe, I contact Brandy.
You know what I got from you Rebecca and other board members? I cannot believe you voted no against this, that's all I heard, that I cannot.
I did not say that, I said, I missed your voice. I said, you needed, you never contacted Joe ahead of time or Brandy ahead of time that you had problems with the resolution. Why, why didn't you do that? If we, if you had contacted them to begin with, they would have known you had something to share. And we could have discussed it, but you neglected to do that.
Well, Rebecca, to be fair, that would be a violation of the open meeting law.
No, no.
We're not supposed to deliberate in private, we're not supposed to be delivering among ourselves when the public isn't looking.
No, but that's not, you can ask a question.
But Dave was following the rules, I think the rules are, are flawed and make it really hard for us to do our job. But he was following the law there.
So it's okay for Dave to not release a statement, but you're upset that I didn't send you an email prior to sending out to constituents? I just want to clear that up.
Yeah.
You attack our character.
Completely different things.
I will let you know this, Dave and Brian, I'm speaking straight from my heart on this. I in no way intended to attack your character. What I did not like, and I clearly stated this in the email, was I strongly disagree with your statements on Thursday night. I do not attack your character, I'm sorry if you felt that I was doing that, that was certainly not my intention. What I did want to be very clear was that I was incredibly upset with the comments from both of you on Thursday night, and that is it.
You don't think your comments. Really? I mean, I, they were completely inappropriate. I, I'm just.
They're inappropriate, and I think the community would think they're inappropriate.
Well, I think yours were inappropriate as well. And it's just goes to say that we will always disagree on this. And maybe it's time that we agree to disagree because we're not going to agree that yours were not inappropriate, because I think that they were. Especially if they sent somebody into a panic attack so harsh that they could no longer be doing their public comment.
Let's focus on that in us for a minute, we're talking about an 18-year-old young man who go back and find what I said in my statement that would put him into a panic attack. Where did I attack, where did I attack him?
All of it, I was going into a little bit of a panic attack, are you kidding me? I actually was not surprised that you voted no, and I, I was surprised that Brian voted yes, actually. I thought it was going to be two nos.
Because you have attributed certain qualities to me based on what?
Based on my experience on this board with you, that is what.
I think Brian, I think Brian's comments, I reread them today and, and they were disgusting. I don't think Brian is disgusting, but his comments about bringing up the mob and the KKK in, like that was so inappropriate and so explosive. And, and I would ask you to, to, to apologize at the next meeting.
I don't believe I have anything to apologize for. First of all, no, excuse me, no racial group owns condemnation of the KKK. The KKK was a horrifying thing. And the fact is, people were insinuating about Dave Brown, that he was a racist based on one data point, his vote, before they had heard his statement. The people who came in there, most of them read the same statement they had before he gave his reasons. Which tells me that they're not really engaging with his ideas. They're out to drive him from office because he, he had wrong thinking one time in one vote. And I am going to stand against the mob, and that is what we've been seeing, is a mob, a mob mentality. That's what, that appears to be what the new political system is, is people getting mad, getting each other worked up on Facebook, and then going and attacking people. And I refuse to just sit by and watch it. Because I think it's evil, and I think it leads us as a society to a very dark place. Even if doing it have good intentions.
Well, I think your intentions might be good, but your, your delivery and your, your, your presence brings out anger. And if someone has already been threatened by a mob or has that connotation, it, it's just not sensitive to the students who are there or, or to, to our constituents of color.
I just want to step in just for a moment and just remind folks something that I've said. As difficult as these conversations are, you know, I think it's good that we're having them. And I just want to remind us that something I've said to several of you is that, you know, this is the easy part. This is the easy part of dealing with our achievement gap. This is the, this is the easy part of dealing with the inequalities that we're grappling with. You know, I've heard everybody on the board say that they want to work towards increasing equality in our district. And right now, this part of it, we're just talking. You know, we haven't actually asked anybody to do anything different. We, we passed a proclamation six to one. And we're having a, a very emotional discussion about that, the wording of that. What that really means to some folks, you know, I, I think, I look around the, the board and I hear some of the comments that I've, I've heard in the community. And everybody feels like they're hearing a dog whistle. I shouldn't say everybody, many folks feel like they're hearing a dog whistle. Some folks feel like, you know, I hear, when I hear Dave talk about Leninism Marxism, you know, to me, that sounds like a dog whistle to the civil rights era of the 1950s, when Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was accused of being a communist. It was, it was a tactic that was used, so that, that, that stirs up emotions in me. And I need to really work hard to separate those emotions with what's really happening and what's really going to be effective. And I just want to remind everybody that it's good to take a deep breath. And you know, I don't like, I don't like listening, Brian, I don't like listening to you yelling and raising your voice at another board member. Rebecca, the same thing. I'll share with everybody that, you know, I wrote, I called Brandy last night and I spoke with her about the email that went out. And I said that, you know, expressing yourself as an individual and as an individual board member, you present yourself one way, and when you present yourself as, when you're speaking as the board chair, you speak another way. Now, I, I feel like that message that she sent out was not something that the whole board would have approved. I see that as, you know, a learning opportunity and something to, to work on. When I hear folks start calling for stepping off the board, that's, to me, that's above and beyond, that's an overreaction to what happened. I certainly understand having strong feelings, strong opinions. But I don't look around and see a single board member who has done something to be removed from the board. And I would encourage folks to think about six months from now. And whatever it is in your mind right now, that you want the Newburgh School Board to be accomplishing six months from now, start laying the groundwork for it in this meeting right here. And yelling at each other and accusing each other of horrible, evil things is not going to get anything done six months from now.
Thank you, Bob.
I would add to that, is it, can people hear me now?
Yes.
I would add to that, that each, that several of us have complained about people attributing motives to us. But most of us have gone ahead and attributed motives to other people and have talked over their attempts to explain them. And we have to be a team. We have to be able to disagree. Disagreement is part of what's the valuable resource on this board. This is a better board than any board I've been on because of the diversity of opinion on it. We have to be able to manage that diversity of opinion in a way that's constructive. Dave does not have to agree with the board resolution, Dave can't undermine it. If he's undermining it, then he's not agreeing to, he's not abiding by the board agreement. He's, that agreement is, once we've decided on something, we all try to make it happen because it's the action of the board. I don't know that Dave is undermining it, I haven't seen what he's doing. Dave, Dave's free to vote against it, so it's five to one, or if I'd been there, six to one. At that point, he's still a member of this team, he still has been elected to this board as much as anybody. This is the first time in my time on the board that the whole board got there by being elected. Or had, at least has run through an election. So all of us have been elected, every one of us has the same right to be on the board. Every one of us presumably is representing some wedge of the community's opinion. And none of us have the right to silence the community. And so we don't have the right to silence each other and ask you not to come so that you, so that that wedge of the community is unrepresented. I don't think we perfectly represent our community, that's the imperfection, imperfections of our system, one of them. But that's the case for each of us here. I think it's fully right for everybody to, to point to the individual things where they disagree. Those are disagreements, that's at one level. The attribution of motives, and also the recognition that each of us is going to interpret things out of our own experience that probably other person didn't mean. That does not excuse the other person about their, about their communication. I tell my boys, you are responsible not only for what you think you mean, but also for how the other people see you, your meaning. Because you can't, they, they, you have to anticipate that. And that's got to be the truth for all of us too. I'm, I want to say something about Brandy's situation, I talked to Brandy this morning as well. And she, uh, one of the things I said at that time was that, one of the reasons I haven't been eager to be a chair, even though I've been here for eight years, is that at various times, just as a board member, I've said things in board meetings that I found out later were interpreted in what I would consider to be horrifying ways that I never intended. This is not confined to my board meeting experience, I'm capable of this all the time. This is a flaw I have, and it's still one of my flaws. So I'm not accusing you of anything that is attributable to me as well. So I guess the question is, I'm similar to Bob's question. How can we as a board figure out a way to operate as a team? Even though we all, we disagree. How can we as a board continue forward, knowing that we disagree?
I would like to add something there, I appreciate that, Bob and Ron, you know, calming it down. You know, going back to sports is what I've done my whole life. Exactly what you guys, you know, just both said is a key element to calming it down when you're in the heat of the battle. Has to happen every time for success to happen, so I appreciate what you guys said. I know from my angle, you know, for everybody that's listening right now, that, you know, being attacked like this is, it's been hard. But I expected it. The one thing that, you know, I would add to what Bob and Ron just said too is the, the ability to disagree and still move through something, you know, like Bob said, is, is so important. And one thing I've noticed here, and it's happening all over, but it's definitely happened to me, is that if you don't agree with somebody, then you're wrong, in this case, you're racist. And that is so untrue. And it's, it's something that as a board, we're going to have to, to come to grips with here, because this is a, this is a big deal. And you know, I can sit back here for two hours and bore you guys to death with stories of, of my upbringing around different kinds of people. And you would just, some of you would just shake your head and say, that doesn't mean anything. Others might say, oh, okay, I didn't know that. But until we each, one of us sit back and, and, and you know, not make that decision based on the fact that if you disagree with people right now in this, this political climate, you're attacked. And I'm not trying to defend this to balance out the scales at all. I'm encouraged big time, because I asked you guys six, seven months ago, clear back in the fall when we were meeting in person, that it's okay to argue, it's okay sometimes to get into a battle, we never had any big battles, we're just talking about the normal school district stuff. And I'd get all excited and then Bob, Bob would sit me down and say, Dave, you know, this is what we do. You know, it's not going to be a thousand miles an hour, it's, it's just one day at a time. And I appreciate that, Bob, I've gone back to that many times to get myself through another meeting when we, I don't feel like we're getting a lot done. But the very fact that when we stand for the Pledge Legions, for an example, and some of us put our hand on our heart, some of us don't, some of us pledge the legions and some of us don't. We can disagree on, on things that are really important to us, and that doesn't mean we're, we're something that the other person's perceiving. And I think that's the dangerous slope I've seen through this whole last couple of weeks. As we've gone through this is that, you know, we have to be able to, to keep the dialogue going, that's why we're supposed to be on the board. This thing got passed, and I strongly disagree with it, but it did get passed. And people were mad at me, and I had so many comments that were like, why can't you vote no, why can't you disagree? You know, and then I had, you know, one of the people that called in, Brandy, you, you respond to them. Why doesn't everybody have to explain their yes vote? And, and that's my point, we're in that, that thing right now, where we don't agree with a, everybody, everybody's jumping on the bandwagon just to, just to immediately go into racist and, and, and hate-filled speech. And that is exactly the opposite of what this resolution should have intended.
One thing that makes me think about Dave is, two things, one is kind of a bigger picture. You know, I, I always kind of bristle a little bit when we say, you know, these times are, things are really polarizing. You know, you can go back, if you went back to a certain year in American history, you could get people just as angry about the gold and the silver standard. And it'd be hard to get that same argument going today. So, you know, I don't want to give us a pass that, you know, this is when things are hard, it was easier before. You know, things are hard, America is a, a hard place to make it work right, and it takes struggle, so. And the other thing that really makes me think about is, you know, so a, a comment I made at last year's board retreat that I think rubbed Brian the wrong way about the role of Facebook and how helpful it was. And I, I have never been a big proponent of Facebook as a platform to discuss issues. For me, what I use Facebook for is to keep up with my friends back, back on the East Coast and friends locally who I don't get to, to stay in touch with. I like to see what they're eating for dinner and what they're doing with their kids. To me, it's not a really healthy environment to discuss issues. No, it's a good place to get out, basic information, hey, we're having a meeting on Tuesday. We're going to talk about this on Wednesday. But you know, I skimmed, I, I, I look at Facebook, I skim through stuff. I've seen horrible comments that folks have made on all ends of the spectrum. Things that, that I really can't imagine that somebody would actually say to somebody's face. And so, you know, maybe we want to, when we get to talking about our board working agreement for the next year, you know, maybe talk about what is the role of Facebook in our. You know, maybe talk about what is the role of Facebook in our discussions and deliberations? Just something to think about.
That's a good comment. I agree.
I think I heard missed most of what Brandy, I don't know what I missed while I was trying to figure out my, my internet problems. I don't know if I want to rehash it, but I haven't heard a lot of what Brandy or, you know, as me have said. And I haven't heard them recently here. I don't know where you guys are now, whether there's something you want to say.
I mean, there's not much that I can add. We're gonna have to work with each other. That's what we signed up for. Let's figure out a way to do it. Because this isn't fun. This is painful. Sometimes I dread coming to these meetings and I shouldn't have to.
Can I ask you a question, Ennis?
But if it's okay, can we have Brandy say something and then get back?
Go ahead, sure.
Not in a rush. I think, you know, in the conversations I had, uh, yesterday evening with Bob and this morning with Ron. Gave me definitely a lot to reflect on as far as the role of, uh. My role as chair and I have. It's emotional. The last three weeks, um, have really been. They've been exhausting in replying back to people's emails and policy questions and. Procedure questions and, you know, what Dave has talked about, about what's been going on Facebook. And I have tried to be very diligent in, in my response to people. And that was really difficult and frustrating at times when. There was a lot of silence from you, Dave. And that was hard. And I, I thought, okay, well, this is my role as chair. I mean, I, I need to respond to constituents and do so in a professional manner. And I, I do agree with what Bob and Ron and, and you know, as are all saying about. That we need, in order to be a highly functioning board, we need to be together on this. As far as we can have our differences, but they need to be constructive. Our discussions need to be constructive and we need to keep moving forward. And, you know, I'm, I'm a pretty optimistic person. And so I, I thought, okay, well, we're, we're all starting off at different spots. Like we, this is all about the individual and we will, we will all grow at our own paces and we will, will build this team. And after the comments made on Thursday night's meeting. I was just. I don't even know what I was. I, I was disappointed. I was angry. I was. Just completely unsure of what in the world we were doing or where we could go. And also the fact that, that they were made in front of children. I mean, they were children of color in the audience listening to us and that was devastating. That's devastating. And. I, it's tough because that, the specific constituent asked for our yes, why, you know, Director Brown is needing to explain his no vote. I want to hear why the yes votes. That was my response. This is why I voted yes. And I, I fully agree that in retrospect, as chair, I needed to word that differently. In order to get those thoughts across. And that is why I sent out, I responded to three emails and I stepped away. Because I recognized that I was in an emotional state about this and it wasn't going to be constructive. And the, the balancing part that I'm on is that I, as chair, you're right. I am often perceived as speaking for the board. Sometimes I am formally speaking for the board. And as an individual board member, I have intense. Connection to this work. And so how do I balance that? And it's going to be a learning process for all of us. And I don't regret saying what I said. I do, I, I do find it highly unfortunate that either Brian or Dave felt attacked. I, I was certainly not. My message, my message was I'm upset with the way that the comments, I'm upset with the comments. I'm not upset with you as individuals. And at the same time, I do recognize that as chair, I should have not had such an emotional response to that email. So. That's all wrong. Summarize a bit, but.
Thank you.
Guys, I think it's something important too, though. You know, is. When. When the listening's not there though. When you talk about kids listening, um, I spent my whole life, that's what I've done, working with kids. And um. I've been besieged by, you know. People supporting what I did. And it's been encouraging to me, probably wouldn't be encouraging to some of you guys, but. They're encouraged that their kids did hear that because they don't agree with the resolution. They don't agree with what's going on out there. So I mean, I think going back to what Bob and Ron were saying, you know. There's a, there's a, there's a bigger picture than our school board. And we've got to look at the whole perspective, you know? I mean, I'm not trying to use this as probably a really bad example. It's like the bond levy. We're just talking about money, but now that we have COVID and everything's changing, you know, we might have to change how we look at everything we do in our schools from ground up. And so we're gonna have to adjust to that and there's gonna be disagreements, but. You know, that gets back to where it's okay to, you know, at least we have to say it's okay to disagree and not be mad and hurt each other. Ennis, I totally agree. I, I've seen it in you and I know I feel the same exact way. Coming to the board meetings about the last thing I want to do. And when I disagree with you or anybody else on the board strongly, it's like, it's hard. And uh. But I think, you know, going through, you know, as a board, what we're doing, um, we're all really different people on this board. I mean, and, and I appreciate all the time you guys put in because if anybody knows how much time I'm putting in, it's you guys and Brandy, I get it. It's a ton of time and, and uh, so we know that most of the public doesn't know. How much time this school board thing takes and all the money we don't make. So. I, I, for me, I want to get back to the point where we're, we have to be mature enough on this board to say, I flat out 100% disagree with you. But I am still going to sit down and chat with you. And uh. Cause I'm telling you guys, for everybody that, 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 uh, has hammered me, I've got somebody that's supported me. And so it's, it's been, you know, that's not what I ever wanted to sign up for, but that's just the reality of the, the thing. I'm standing up for what I, I believe and you're standing up for what you believe. And uh. The one thing I've heard consistent though, from all of us, which is rare, that we're all on the same page. Is I, I really truly believe this. I really believe that Rebecca, Brandy, Bob, Ennis, Brian and Ron, we all care about kids. I've, I've heard that. We, we go about it in a different way. We think about it in a different way. Some of us want to think about, uh, how we should do it in a different way, but. I, I, one of the things I hang my hat on Ennis is the fact that I, I really believe we do all care about kids. We definitely look at it, you know, in the current term, different lens. But uh, when I get frustrated and I walk away from a meeting and I don't want to come back to the next one. I really believe that everybody here is. In their heart cares about kids. And so I appreciate that about you guys. And uh, like I said months ago, sometimes we have to, to tee it up and uh. You know, my goal isn't to wake up this morning and, and have an argument with Rebecca Pyros. I, I like Rebecca. I think she's not only a nice lady and raised a great family. You know, I know she's been through hell and back with all of her, her stuff she's gone through. And I appreciate your service, Rebecca. I'm just talking to you right now. But uh, and I know we disagree and we, you know, we can do things different. And that's part of like our board working better together, you know, maybe all through this. And I'm sorry, some of my actions made it harder for you guys. You know, I strongly believe in what I believe I put in resolution and I tried to say that in a way where I had a lot of people say it was said very well. But again, the fundamental thing about disagreeing is, is okay, we disagree. Where are we gonna go next? Like, again, a dumb example in the bond levy, are we gonna really rebuild Dundee School? When we might not even have the same type of schools anymore? I don't know. You know, I don't know. I mean, I, to me, that's a question, but uh, you know, that's more of a, you know. It's gonna be a hot button issue in a couple of months, but you know, right now. Again, I don't wake up Rebecca, Ennis or Brandy, anybody you guys, you know, I'm hoping you guys have a good day and. And I, I, that's why I keep saying, you know. Moving forward is, is our, our best move. And uh, I know I'm going on long on this, but I know emotions are running high and uh. I, I would just say, we, we at least have got to quit judging each other within this, this Zoom meeting that you think we know. I'm gonna leave, I'll, I'll end with this and I'll quit talking for a while. The reason I've done well coaching is because we always put together team building things. And it's amazing how when you do that and people really get to start talking, we've never really done that on this board. And you really start to understand, you know, example, like, you know, who Bob Woodwiff really is. You can start to, to get the whole picture of him and not just these two hour board meetings we get in the comments. Or me or Ennis or anybody else on this board. And we haven't done that. And I think if we did, if we understood each other's, uh, life and background just a little bit more. Then we, we might be a little bit more understanding where we're all coming from. Cause I still, again, I think we all care about kids. So I'll quit talking now.
Have more conversation around this?
I would want to know how Brian is feeling.
You know. I try to be a forgiving person and I believe we all need to give each other more grace. I think that's the biggest thing in the world these days is we don't give you, we're too quick to assume the worst. But I really wonder what the conversation we're having right now would be if in, in what Brandy said about us. You substituted the word white for black. I wonder, I wonder what this conversation would look like if that was the sentence that had gone out. And I just, it's, it is very bothersome to me that. We seem to be okay with racism against certain groups. We seem to be okay with racism against the historical oppressors. And I, I absolutely reject this narrative that's going around of America as a fundamentally. As fundamentally a place of oppressors and oppressed. You know, for, for every example you can give me of the horrors of white supremacy, I can, I can show you. The abolitionists who worked in slavery, the hundreds of thousands of Union soldiers who gave up their lives. I don't dispute that the Civil War is about slavery. It was about slavery and that means that there were a lot of white people who went and gave the ultimate sacrifice to ultimately free the slaves. And this narrative that we have going around right now. Where it's just the evil white patriarchy oppressing everyone else. First of all, it's false. It's dogmatic. It has the elements of religion to it frankly. And I feel like we're on the road to indoctrinating our children with it. And the other day, my son came to me because he's seven years old. He's not, he's, he's pretty smart. He, he knows a lot about what's going on in the world. And he said to me, Daddy, are the white people the bad people? And I wonder if, if the, and it, when I say that, I, I, I hope none of you in your heart of hearts answered, yes, they are. And if, if you did, I, I hope you'll reflect on where you're at as a person right now. But we should not be sowing future inequities by trying to address past inequities. And I feel like that's where the road we're on currently. With the intolerant social justice bent. And I did notice that in that resolution that we put that there and I, I almost voted against it just for that. And I think I would have been justified in that and I kind of wish I had frankly.
So why did? Why did you vote for it?
Because I fundamentally want to support all people and I, I do want to make a statement against racism. And frankly, uh, I'm honestly, I've been a little being down because, you know, this group is fairly. I have not found this group to be very open to other ideas. And honestly, at that point, I was just so worn down that I was like, who cares? I'm, I'm not gonna fight it. I'm tired of fighting. And not having anyone try to move towards my point of view at all. Everyone seems to be at their point of view and no one feels the need to, to try and go into the center and, and find compromise.
So Brian, I think, I think that it's on me.
It's on me. And I accept that.
Well, isn't that, you're not describing my experience with you, Brian. You've had at least a couple of times I can probably point to where you've helped change my view about certain things. I, as you know, I'm a strong supporter of that resolution. I was glad to see you support it. I assumed, and again, I shouldn't be assuming, I should have asked. But I assumed you supported it because you wanted to see us remove achievement gaps. You wanted everybody to feel safe in schools and that's basically what this thing was about.
I, I. I have very mixed feelings on achievement gaps. First of all, I'm not, I, there is obviously, if you, if you arbitrarily break up our student population into racial groups and you see disparities, those, those are there, right? But we have never done any sort of. Methodological analysis. We've never done any sort of multi-factor analysis or commissioned anyone to do multi-factor analysis. Actually show that these disparities are the result of some sort of racial bias. We haven't gotten it. No social scientist worth their, worth their salt would take a raw data set and try to extrapolate conclusions from it. So I don't honestly know if we have a racial disparity in our schools because we've never done the work to find out what the data actually says.
Well, I'm a little bit, I have a little facility with data and I am convinced. And I think it's because there's so many redundant ways that the same thing keeps showing up. So that's not a doubt in my mind.
But why, why is it that we assume that to, you know, why consider arbitrary groups? Race is not real. I know that, that.
Well, except that it's effects, have consistently been real in history. I don't, I'm not really eager in getting back into the argument. I was, I really wanted to hear what your reason was for supporting it and what the content of that was that you were looking for. You know, that, that you were favorable to.
I supported it because I agreed with 60% of it. I'd rather get 60% than not 60%. And I wanted to say that we. And I don't know if this is really what that resolution says, but we don't want to treat people differently based on the color of their skin. That we want to give everyone an equal opportunity to succeed regardless of, of their status of birth. And I'm not convinced that's what that does. And to me, that doesn't result in when we do test scores, which frankly are not. I don't know why we, why we care so much about test scores because they are so flawed. You know, certain people are better at taking tests. Why is that the only thing we have to measure achievement by?
It's a problem.
But. I first, I don't know. If you look at the wages of two groups of people, you'll find disparities. It's nature. It's the reality of the world. So a, a white person of Russian descent makes 19 cents less on the dollar than a white person of French descent. Is that, what is, what is causing that? I'm sure there's all kinds of historic patterns and stuff that play into that disparity. It's not white privilege, obviously, but there's a disparity there because disparities are the normal in nature. And it's okay. It's okay. It doesn't devalue the humanity of the, the people who are on the lower end of that, of that test score.
Well, right now, so right now, Brian, it's almost like you're saying a white Russian is somehow lesser capable than a, than a white.
No, not at all.
Okay, well, it kind of sounded like that. That's why people might interpret it that way.
No. They, you know, they may tend to go into different occupations that pay different wages. So again, like if you took group A and group B and you didn't tell me what the labels were and you showed me the gap. And you said, what are the, the potentials costs of this? I'm sure one of them would be racism and yeah, racism might be the root cause of our achievement gap and we have to deal with that. the root cause of our achievement gap and we have to deal with that, but we don't have that data.
Well, we don't have any better data either. So the fact that we don't have any better data means we go on the best data we have. Um, I appreciate that, Brian. I appreciate your explanation. I think it helps me. I don't, I don't think we need to dominate more time with that particular question unless you feel like we do.
I need a break from this. Can we take some time?
Yeah, absolutely. So let's come back at 2:05. It's about a 14 minute break.
Oh Lucy, come here.
Dave, you're still unmuted.
Talking to my dog.
Not muted. Good. All right. So we're back to 2:05. Everyone's back.
Okay. Brandy, could I start?
Sure, Rebecca.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank Bob for calming me down. I'm sorry for getting, for over speaking to Dave and Brian. But as you can tell, I feel passionate about this work we're doing. And um, as Dave said, we care about the work we do at the board and we do it for the students and for the families of Newburg Bendy School District. Going forward, we need to build trust between our board members. I need to know that, that Dave's vote, I need, I would like to understand what he didn't like about the resolution. The resolution we presented not what other, other school boards or other districts on, on the resolution that Newburg School Board passed. And I need to know that, that Brian, if you don't agree with something, that you will speak up because we, we depend on the voices of the board to help direct our, our work, what we're doing. And when we have an open dialogue, which I thought we had previous to this last episode, that um, if there were questions that you feel free to re, Joe had asked for questions on the, the resolution presented. And we had the packet from the Friday to the Tuesday. At any time, questions could have been raised. And um, I have to be able to trust that if you have serious questions about something, that, that it's being raised so we could discuss it. And, and um, also that you have trust to your fellow board members to share and your statements as such as what Dave shared on, on Thursday night. Um, that would go a long way to create a working dialogue between us all. And I think then, yes, your vote, you can vote whichever way you feel. That's your right. And, and um, I, I don't have to agree with it, but I can accept it that, that you um, shared with us your, your reasonings and we could look at them and say, yes, they're, they're right. And no, we don't agree with your reasonings, but you're still able to use your voice as you see fit. But because there was such a void in what, in, in not knowing what was going on, it made it an uncomfortable position to be in. And so I, I want to build, I want to be trustworthy and um, thoughtful in what I vote for and to listen to all the voices at the table. That's why we are a diverse group. And we all come with different perspectives, but we need to also work to share those perspectives. And um, on the situation with Brandy, I, I have full trust in her as a board chair. And um, it's not for any of us board members to call for resignations or for various board members to step down. You were elected by the people. The people have that right to ask for, for you to step down if, if so be it to a recall position. But I, but I don't feel that it's our place to, to call for your resignation or call for, for Dave's or Brian's resignation. There are other ways we can handle that. So thank you. Thank you, Bob and Ron for being so level headed. We, we are thankful to have um, cooler heads at times on the board.
Thanks Rebecca. How was the board feeling about moving on to the goal conversation? Or do we want to stay here and continue this conversation?
If I can just respond to what she said. Yeah, I, I, I take full responsibility for not speaking up about my concerns about the resolution. Um, you know, I, I explained why that was. And the, to add to my list, there's all, there was also the realization of what I knew would what I knew would happen. And what did happen to Dave. So, you know, there's that sort of pressure to conform to not be a, a target of the mob. And that is, that is just the reality we live in. That's no one's on this board's fault. But I will try to make sure that I speak my mind. Even on, even on the depression days, if you will.
Rebecca, you had like three things you were asking there. Can you repeat those again? I mean, I got the last one.
What was the last one?
About Brandy and the-
Oh, that, that you will speak up if you have questions even ahead of time. That, that we can hear your voice. That, that we trust that you will, you will be forthcoming with, with the board, how you feel about things. We still haven't really heard about this particular res- resolution. What is it? Not thinking of the OSBA or the caucus. What is it about our particular resolution that you disagree with? And that would help us to, to understand and, and maybe defend you as your right to say no.
The, the resolution is a direct reflection of our, our super close. I'm trying to write how, how we are so connected to OSBA. I mean, if we pretty much do what they say and that's, 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 that just came out of my ear here. I've seen many things about the OSBA that I haven't liked. But you know, coming from a, just a school board member in Newburg, it's like, I've asked for a couple of meetings down there. I haven't got repeat, I haven't got any responses, you know, to come down to talk to people. That's something I just need to keep working at and get some answers for myself. But our, our resolution came out of their, their overall intent, what was coming out in Tiger 12 and where he said everybody else, we were pretty similar. But when I looked at that thing at first, I was like, Brian, it's just like, well, what the heck? We're going to pass this thing anyway. And it's like, you know, why, why even try to sit back and go over that? Then when I couldn't make my comment, there was no way, when I looked at white supremacy in our resolution, and that we constantly are talking about the very thing that when we're talking about, we're gonna hire of color. I'm okay with everybody in our, our district staff is, is black, brown, white. I mean, I don't care. I just want the best teachers. But a lot of our, that whole resolution to me and, and almost, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback. A lot of people feel this way. You don't. But they feel like we have just kowtowed down to the, the popular thinking right now. And it, it is rooted in, in something that's not healthy for our country or our kids. And it's, you can say it's left, you can say it's liberal, you can say whatever you want. And the very thing we're talking about, it's interesting. We're talking about racist. But now we have to be anti-racist. And that comes directly from what I said in my statement. And I said over and over and over again that I have spent my entire life and career supporting every single kid that comes before me or every family that comes before me. I don't care if they're brown, black or white. I don't care. And, and I'm not inherently racist. And that's what white supremacy means. And if you guys want to vote for that, you have a lot of people that are on your side. But you have a lot of people that disagree with that. And I think over the next month or so, this conversation is gonna, to, to get bigger and bigger. And it's gonna be a tough one. And that's why when I adopt my stance Rebecca, and I go back to, I'm gonna treat every person in front of me fine. I'm gonna treat them as well as I can. I'm gonna respect them because I don't care. Personally, I don't care. And when I'm called inherently racist through a white supremacy type thing in our resolution in Newburgh, Oregon, there is no way I'm voting for that. And I think it was totally wrong for that. And I, I'd like to know where we were all at May 24th. If, if our schools were so dangerous and so bad for our kids and, and everything. Just think about this, if we had had a measles outbreak or we would have had anything like that, or we had COVID-19, we shut our schools down immediately for the state of Oregon. And because we're out to protect kids, we weren't there anywhere until May 24th. We didn't do anything until George Floyd passed away and was, was, was killed. And I condemned that in my, my letter. I don't know if you guys even read the letter. I totally condemn that. But I, what I don't condone is the fact that we're Newburg, just like everybody else around here, and some school districts aren't putting up with it, and some communities are not putting up with it, that we're being told because we're white, that we're inherently racist. And I just don't believe that. I don't believe in the white supremacy outlook on that. And I said in my letter over and over again, what's happened in our country and how people have been treated poorly. And that's everybody. You can go back farther than, than, than you want to. But we didn't invent slavery in this country. This slavery was invented a thousand years before that in Africa within their own peoples. And it's one of the worst things that, that this world's ever produced and, and the, the humans that, that we would actually do that to people. And like Brian said, you know, we're trying to make this all about race when we're trying to talk about anti-racism. And you know, we're trying to go out of our way to sit here and, and apologize. I'm not going to apologize for who I am because I have lived my life trying to be fair to every single person. When I've hired people, fired people, when I've promoted people, when I've worked with people. We spent what, 100 years trying to get women equal rights. And it took way too long, but it, it finally is way better. I don't think it's where it should be Rebecca, but I think it's way better than it was 100 years ago. And a lot of these things take a long time, decades and, and decades to get better at. And are there racist white people in this country? Absolutely, absolutely. But if you talk to people enough around this country, we'll also find that there are racist people in all races. And I have, I've had that, so many people said that. And we can all have our intent and I'm sure that everybody's got their stories as we heard the other night. And I listened to every single one of those people talk. And I thought some of those guys have some really darn good points. And I thought other people were speaking on completely on emotion. And you know, so our meeting started today with nothing but emotion. And it's, it's, it's not the way to get anything done, not on a school board, and we're talking about 5,500 workers. But the language in that thing, I, I, the more I looked at it Rebecca, and I came to the, the point where I had to, to make a decision that night. Could I have called in? I thought about that later. I was so mad, my computer was broke down and I couldn't make my statement. I had a statement all prepared. But you know, the only thing good about it was for me is as I looked at that deeper and deeper and deeper, the more and more it's wrong. And, and we've already passed it. It's, it's, it's a go. But it's not, it's not the right way to go on this. And the more we talk about color, the more we talk about brown, black and white, the, the farther we're going to move from being healthy. And do I think every single kid, I don't care if a kid just got here from Mexico, first time, first day, that kid needs to be treated as well as any kid in our school district. But so does every white kid. And so does every black kid in our community. So does every Asian kid. I don't care about those, those, those labels we're putting on everybody. And that resolution puts labels out. And whether or not you can sit back and shake your head right now and be all disgusted about labels, that's exactly what we're doing. And it's the wrong way to go. You know, if you're a Christian and you go to church, you'd say it's sin. But I'll, I'll back away from that because not everybody here goes to church, but you can talk, cock, talk about as a hard issue. That's where it's really at on this thing. It's a hard issue. And there's people in our district, and I, I said this before, in my 20 years working at Newburgh High School, was there racism going on? I never saw it directly from a staff member to a kid. Did it happen? I'm sure it did. I'm, I'm positive it did. I didn't see it personally. I saw it from student to student and it went all which ways, from one race to another. And to, to speak of some of these kids that always, you know, get, get ripped up. And all you guys have had the same experience. Some of us are older, different decades by far, but kids are brutal. Kids say stuff all the time. I had so many things say to me, you know, growing up that you just go home and you, and you are beaten down. You're a kid. You don't know how to handle it. And then when you get to be 63 and you go to a school board and you, and you make a no vote, then you learn again how hateful people can be and all the mean things they can say. And how rude they can be. And when you try to speak to them, one word, they turn around and say, no, you're wrong. I gotta fix you. I'm not interested in fixing brown people or black people or white people. I'm interested in loving on them, taking care of them and making sure they're okay. And white supremacy in our, our resolution was absolutely racist and wrong. The question, Rebecca, I don't know what it was.
Yeah, that's, that, that answers it.
Okay, good. I, I really want to honor our time and commitment to the goals or forming the goals. Do, does anyone feel like we need to take a little bit of a break again to let this section of the meeting pass? Or can we move on to the next agenda item?
Brandy, I have one more thing. I just sat back and reread what you wrote and again, and I'd like, I'd just like to know why, because we're, we're on this right now. And I know we're going to move on to other things that we're talking about. In your, in your words, this is your quote. "I am disgusted by the statements that Director Shannon and Brown gave last night. I am embarrassed for our community. I pray that that little boy who grows up strong and determined, that he understands that while some people stood on the sidelines and some actively yelled and screamed to protect their perceived superiority, others fought for him." Last part I agree with. First part's horrible. And, and again, I, I can't come to grips with how you used your position to, to, to come directly at Director Shannon and myself. And I personally, I think you're a nice lady. I like you. As a board member right now, Ines always tells me she's upset. I'm upset. I don't like having those things said. You know, I'm pretty tough and I can handle all this crap that's been thrown at me for the last three weeks. And I get it. You know, computers don't work. I don't make a statement. This happens, this happens. But I've had to sit there and listen to this. Fortunately, I'm getting more on the positive side. So that makes me feel better, but I don't care about me on this thing. And I feel like it's way too much about all of us and we don't have that luxury. We need to be about, you know, the, the school, but I, I don't like what that said. And I don't think we, we need to come back to that at some point. I know we can go on about it all day long. But I went down, made a, an eggnog on our break right there. And I stopped and I said, well, what about Brian's son? You know, I teared up over that. A little seven-year-old kid said to his dad saying, you know, are all white people bad? And that's the, the, the bad message that, that all of this has come about. Are all white people bad dad? A seven-year-old saying that. So is he just as important as a kid from a brown family or a black family? Yeah, he is. Is he inherently racist as a seven-year-old? No, he's not. And I'm just like, wow. You know, where have we gone with this conversation? Because I know you love your kids more than anything in the world. You're a great mom. I get that. And Rebecca and everybody else and, and Ron and it was celebrating his kids graduating this year. It was awesome. If, if we're, if we're trying to put a group down and to, to build another group up, it's, it's absolutely going to crumble on us as a school board. We've got to step back and reflect on this and I know we have to move on, but-
That's fine. No, I mean, okay.
Because I'd not like it to stop. So now it is re-recording. I apologize. I don't know what that did.
Okay.
I think the meeting was, the last meeting wasn't recorded. At least that's what I was told when I asked for a record because I missed it.
So that, guys, me, we're, we're doing Zoom meetings from here on out. We won't meet in person again.
Well, someday we will, but not even soon.
And I assume we could, we could record them after, even record them on Zoom even if we wanted to after we were meeting in person. But that's another question, I guess.
Those are two separate conversations, but you know, as we're going now, I just, I would like to have all of our meetings going forward available, recorded for folks, whether it's in person or Zoom.
So Greg, I know in our conversations around this, you had mentioned that we might need to speak legal counsel just to ensure that we're meeting guidelines. And if we need to do that, that would certainly come at some sort of cost. So I agree that it needs to be a board action. Joe, Greg, am I correct in that assumption of needing it to go out to legal?
Yeah, we'll check in with legal. I think that the, the question and Ines kind of spoke to it. And we've seen the YouTube closed captioning, auto translate, which is actually frankly not bad. Because I, I actually use my closed captioning partly because I'm starting to not be able to hear as well. So I use that a lot in different meetings. But, but getting it up to YouTube, the closed captioning has always been the, the issue for us. So a streaming meeting would be, would be harder to do, but not impossible. So, no, we'll check on that. It's, it's not going to, if we're, if that will cover us, then that would be something that's minimal to no cost. So that's just part of our process. I don't think we're going to have to, to do too much on that. We can report back. We can put it out to an email. We'll certainly check in with our attorney on that, but that's not a, that's not a huge expense for us to do and probably smart for us to just get that before we move forward. But no, we don't need more to action. That's something that you want to move toward. Especially I think in light of us doing all of these this way, and we have the capacity to put them up, then that also might change the level of detail in our written minutes. And so we can actually get them turned around faster. Now we've got a full recording. I think we talked earlier in the year about having auto, audio recordings of, of our committee meetings, things like that. So this actually can kind of fit within that same, that same space.
And I knew, do need to jump on there to say that today's meeting, it was impossible for me to, to keep up with minutes as I've done in the past. So there will not be written minutes that reflect everyone's comments. There's just no way for me to do that from the course of this meeting.
That's good.
Understandable.
Probably lengthy heated conversation would probably cover it.
Okay. Good, we got that. Is there anything else before we get to the goals? All right. Who, who wants to start us off with one of the goals? And I, I'm assuming I, a week ago emailed out my notes on this around the four goals that we had chatted about. So I'm hoping everybody has a chance, had a chance to look at those and develop some language of their own.
Brandy, I don't, that was what I was texting you about. Did you send that to me? I don't know if I-
It wasn't like a, it was, I can forward it to you right now.
I, on the, well, my, the paper here I have says commit to becoming an anti-racism board as the first heading and then have learning and bond and safety underneath that. Is that the right one I should be looking at? The first three of those under the commitment becoming anti-racism board are, are as well, the state, the first one is pretty specific about listening sessions, although we'll have to figure out how many and, and what the format is. I'm not sure what the next two are meant to mean. Board development, education. So, you know, I'm not asking us to clarify that right now. I'm just pointing out, it doesn't, it's not clear how that's, it's not self-executing exactly. The create an equity lens, we've been talking about equity lenses off and on the whole eight years I've been here. So, and it's always been relatively abstract to me what that means exactly. How do we, unless we're just means we're paying attention to equity issues, which is what we should be doing. Is, if it means something more than that, if it's something more specific, it would be useful to have reference to that. Because I don't think we've ever in my eight years had that clarified more than just sort of in general. And I guess my last comment on that first category would be, I think that it's possible to come up with more specific actions that we could take. For example, I already wrote this up this morning, but the, we talked to just, just a little bit ago about the data that we have on different things. And so it'd be useful to update our data on variable outcomes by race, ethnicity, gender, et cetera. And not just in two, in terms of achievement, but in terms of discipline or bullying and harassing or access to special programs like tag or music or drama or sports or whatever robotics. And that's an action that we could ask, or I mean, that's a specific action we could ask our staff to take in a normal year at least, if we're not killing them with, by this action this year. Another one like that would be to- Uh, another one like that would be to research other districts. Uh, I actually started that doing that a little bit this week. Having a little more time on my hand than I wanted. And I found some interesting things I'd like to pursue. And I think, you know, we had a group working on that a little more systematically. It could be more fruitful. And then I'm thinking about some, you know, like even adding something about pursuing it, some extra funding, different funding for I I don't know what to call them, a fair start initiatives, where we get kids on the same starting line at some point or closer to that. Uh, fair start initiatives or something. Do I say that? That something like that, that we would, I'd like to see some action steps in there that make sense and that are doable and that would improve our understanding of the problem and so forth. I've written those up if anybody wants to see how they wrote them. So.
On the first start thing, how would you measure that? Like, what what would that look like in your mind?
Well, it it's vague in my mind. Uh, and it's not specific. But it would be where we can identify that students are entering, entering schools at some sort of disadvantage, uh, linguistic perhaps, maybe, you know, um, they're not, they're not, groups of students aren't coming in with prepared to read or whatever these things are that, um, where we can identify that they're not starting at the same starting line. Uh, some of that would reach pre-K probably, and I'm not really sure we can afford to extend our mission at this point with the funds we have. But that's why I was talking about looking for other kinds of funding. So I'm sure people are already doing this, and I'm not the first person to think of this. And it may be that Joe will tell me, yeah, we've been doing that for years and we've come up with just this much or whatever. But my 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 point is these would be examples of action steps that would help us embody what this concern is in a way that would be beneficial to kids.
And who, how would you decide who would need that help? Are you thinking that it would be at the individual student level or by group?
Whichever way would seem to be most effective to whatever the 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 received need is. Some of it would be individual, but there might be situations where we can identify groups that we can reach and make a big impact. That's just me talking off the top of my head. I think it might even be worthwhile to have a committee on the board on this if we need to. Or or if it's better to have a committee of staff that's reporting to the board or something. I mean, that I'm, I haven't got any specific idea about how that happens. I'd just like to see some action steps on that. I also remember, and I didn't put it in here, but uh, my, uh, at a previous meeting, um, meetings are running together for me now. I asked for uh, input from from anybody about policies in particular that seem to have disparate impacts that we wouldn't have intended. And I started looking through policies and I haven't marked up much, but if some people are aware of particular policies that are just not working fairly, then we could do some policy revision as well. Like, you know, we need more of that, apparently. Everybody loves policy.
So Ron, I want to make sure I understood what you were saying. And this would have been under the step sort of two of that goal as kind of an action step.
Commit to board, coming aboard a racist goal. My way I have it formatted is six steps now. Um, I think I must have added steps. After equity lens, I think might have been the last one that was on the list. And then I add an update, update data, research other districts and pursue fair start initiatives.
Okay. Greg, did you get those?
And I can give you the text of it. It's not that exciting, but it's easier probably.
Ron, could you say them again more slowly? Update data, research other districts. So what was the last one?
Okay, so the first one's update and extend our data on variable outcomes by race, ethnicity. Why don't I just send it to you?
Well, I have, hey, hang on, I'm I can share the screen. I also just shared the doc with you. I'm trying, sorry, I'm having conversion problems from email. I'm trying to make it.
Okay, it's too much. I'm sorry. So I'll just
Brandy, would you like me to share the screen so that people can see what I'm working on?
Sure. I think it'd be helpful. I don't know.
Um, would it be possible, Joe, for you to speak to what we're currently doing along the lines of what Ron is suggesting?
If he can figure that out, yeah.
Which, so which ones? So the, he had a question about
We start to make sure that we're we're starting all kids off at the same starting line.
Right. So the only program that we currently have in place for that is paid through a federal migrant dollars called, it's a migrant preschool. And so we have a set of students who come uh, for morning and then a set of students who come for the afternoon. And that's over at Edwards. Uh, and so they have to qualify as a migrant family. Um, and then they are allowed into that program. They have to apply for it. We have a certain uh, limit of it and things like that. But that's, that's the only um, additional start place that we have. There are, there is a head start in town, which is uh, already at capacity, uh, but we don't have any other kinds of things for that piece yet. That's just something we have not added into staffing. So we pay for it currently through federal dollars, federal migrant program.
So Greg, on the, what you're doing now, where it says like update, extend our data, I think it should say on variable outcomes by race, ethnicity, et cetera.
And then the, no, go ahead.
And then it says improve, you say improve, I say, oh, yeah, I want it to be the well, that's good enough. I mean, I would fair start, uh, yeah.
Okay.
I I made some jargon there that maybe nobody else will want to use, but.
Ron, a question.
Oh, go ahead, Ines.
Does it make sense to even be talking about committing to becoming an anti-racist board? When we just had a long conversation of about an anti-racist resolution that we couldn't agree on? I just, um, thinking that we might be wasting our time and trying to come up with action steps to a goal where we're not in agreement.
Yeah, I, this is a conversation that I'm, I don't think I know the entire answer to, but I'm, I'm not convinced that we have to be unanimous in that resolution to move forward. And we don't, we, we will frequently have resolutions where we our decisions, we were not unanimous and we move forward.
Right. But there's no, I don't know that there's even basic understanding of, so when we talk about improving um, the starting line, what does that mean? That means allocating more resources to some and not others. And I think that's what the problem is with the resolution that we passed according to the conversation we just had.
It's a problem for the those who who don't support the resolution, but the rest of us have endorsed the resolution. I I'm really reluctant to slow down on that.
The equity lens, so this is for Ines also, um, and Ron, you brought up the point. What happens on school boards generally, um, work on those is it actually provides a set of questions that you can ask when we're looking at putting in programs or making some changes to our systems. Um, you know, it, there are usually a set of questions for us to consider about who it affects positively and negatively. Um, you know, what data has been used to form the initiative? Um, you know, what barriers to more equitable outcomes are, you know, planned? Um, how does it build capacity and power underserved groups, things like that? So there are actually a set of questions that as board members, you can ask of staff of presenting things that helps kind of frame those questions and conversations around program implementation uh, to make sure that the district itself is also paying attention to all of the the kind of initiatives that we look at uh, from an equity standpoint, uh, sustainability, scalability. Uh, you know, what kind of information can you uh, expect back from uh, the staff about the effects of the decision, you know, later on, things like that. So it's a, it's kind of a way to frame. Uh, and I, they usually just, it's like a two-sided thing of questions and allows you to to ask those either. Uh, you're getting that as part of the presentation, or if you're not getting that information, then it helps uh, frame those those questions for us from the board to the staff. So that's kind of, you know, when you look at, when you create the lens, it also comes with a tool for you to be able to ask very specific questions about how it supports um, underserved or uh, underperforming groups.
Yeah, I hear your concerns for sure. And I share, but I also agree with Ron. And I think it's important that, you know, we've, we've started this as seen by our difficult conversation this afternoon. And um, I think by having action steps in there, it's uh, it's giving us concrete things to work on.
How do we on number one? I mean, can you guys explain that one to me a little bit closer, how that works?
In listening sessions?
Yeah, Joe, will you speak to that a little bit? Because we've had a little conversation around it, but not a lot. And you have a lot more experience with that.
Sure. Um, well, we, in in a, in a way, we sort of did uh, beginning of that this last Thursday, two days ago. But when you do this, this is more like focus groups to find out specifically. Uh, you know, when you meet and we'll have to, of course, do it uh, via Zoom and what have you. But this is how um, you can hear uh, directly from uh, members of the community around their experience in school. Uh, and then it helps it then inform both the staff and the board of some of the things that the way people uh, experience school, um, you know, what's happened? How does it feel to work here? You know, so if you're a member, a staff member of color. Uh, and so it's just a way for us to do more focus groups directly with the people who are uh, at the point of impact. And I think that that's when you, uh, we were talking about this before, not just in terms of uh, anti-racism, but also uh, in uh, how they feel in our systems and what we can do to improve uh, certain spaces, certain experiences, uh, the kinds of programs that we have. How do people feel about it? It helps bring to light, I think, some of the stories and lived experiences of some of our, uh, our uh, communities, uh, who we traditionally underserved, frankly. So uh, there are lots of ways to do these, but they're basically focus groups and then allow you to hear directly from uh, from stu- uh, students, families and staff members of color and in as more structured uh, way. So, yeah, there's, there are a lot of ways to do these focus groups, but we've done them. I've done them in the past many times with with uh, hard conversations rather than having a huge board meeting, which can be very uh, very intimidating frankly for people. So how do you do it in a more uh, comfortable way where you can get some some listening in and and uh, provide you some insight directly from those people who are most affected?
How do we, so when we say students, families and staff members of color, I mean, I mean, what, how are we choosing color?
Well, we generally let people self-identify. Um, you know, we set it up that way. Uh, and so the listening sessions in this case are about specifically what are the experiences of our student staff and families of color. So we would say that, you know, you may select that. And there are, I have heard from uh, people who consider themselves people of color across uh, multiple, multiple racial groups. Uh, and so it's really, we would not predetermine that. We let people self-select uh, about how they, uh, you know, how they identify. And they may be what we as a my, from my own perspective, I might consider a person of color. They may not consider themselves a person of color depending upon their experience. So uh, that's kind of a, you make an open invitation and people who wish to to identify and then be part of those focus groups would do that.
So I mean, we're not limited this to uh, color. We're, we're just saying, why can't we just say, conduct listening sessions with students, families and staff members? I mean, because if we're not picking color, then we're not picking color. So.
Well, we're, we're specifically targeting the experiences of our non-white community. That's part of the listening session to hear from the the lesser number of people's experiences. There are, there are fewer in number. And so it's a way to reach out directly and specifically.
But if we're talking about being an anti-racist board, I mean, I get that totally. Think we should do that one. Um, but then don't we need to talk to our entire set of students, families and staff members? Because I mean, everybody's got their experience.
Not when we're talking about um, trying to figure out what it's like to experience school um, from um, the perspective of somebody who uh, looks different than the vast, than the larger majority. So you're trying to get specifically the experiences uh, of people whose voices aren't necessarily heard.
I guess I, I'm just trying to wrap that around. I mean, I get talking to everybody. I just, I'm just trying to think, well, if you're you know, we're labeling, so we're saying staff members of color in this thing, we're saying, you know, you have to be, you know, we're saying, you know, not white is what we're saying. We
Correct.
Have like one A here could be, we need to conduct listening sessions with all students, families and staffers, because everybody's got their experience. I mean, that's that's what we're trying to get back. If there is bad experiences with these staff members or kids or families. Um, and I'm sure there are. Um, but we know that you know, all of our kids struggle with with a lot of this stuff. And uh, I mean, don't we want to hear them too?
If certainly if we had folks who wanted to come and describe their experience being discriminated as a white person in our district, I would be open to hearing that. I haven't heard, I haven't heard before that that's been an issue, that white folks are, white people are being, white students and staff are experiencing discrimination for their, their their race, but um, I'd be open here if folks are feeling discriminated because of being white.
I mean, I guess I've been, I'm, I'm trying to take the bad point of this, because you guys said I didn't ask enough questions. So I'm trying to ask the tough questions here, guys. Are we saying then that, that uh, we don't want to hear the perspective because you know, we're not going out and actively saying that we're going to go out and
We're actively seeking the experiences of folks who have experienced racism in the Newburgh School District. If folks who are white feel like they've experienced, uh, have been the targets of racism, I would want to hear that.
I mean, the way this is read, nobody
Right. I mean, can't we just say that we want to conduct the listening sessions with students, families and staff members around the issue of racism? I mean, that gets everybody there. It stops this thing where we insist on breaking everyone into groups and saying them against each other. Why, why can we not take that approach?
I think one of the reasons is that we want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable sharing what their, what their experience is. I suppose you could have a situation where you offered uh, listening sessions to uh, different groups, including one for uh, majority race groups. And um, they can, they could, we could listen to all of those. Um, I think the, the notion is that if if uh, everybody's invited and everybody shows up proportionate to their um, ethnicity and gender, then the meeting would be dominated by the people who probably have experienced, maybe not entirely no discrimination, but less discrimination. And we were trying to get things where we can hear from people we don't normally hear from. So that's the notion of having some that would be aimed at folks of color who might have discriminated. I think there is an argument here that there are some other groups that aren't, what are you eating, Bob? That's so distracting. Uh, uh, other groups that are uh, might fear some disadvantages. I mean, I'm thinking homeless people, which would not necessarily be racially distributed. At least not per, you know, it's mixed race, uh, mixed ethnicity, or it could, we could even talk about religious minorities. I mean, depends on how much time and effort we can put into this. Uh, we might do listening sessions for other groups who also have trouble accessing the full advantage of our school district.
Okay, tough question, guys. Is it fairness?
Dave, really quick, I just want to say one quick thing about that before we move on, just really quick. Um, I, as a person who identifies as a white majority person in this community, I think that I will find a lot of value in hearing the stories of others, hearing the stories of people that I don't regularly interact with or that I don't share experiences with. So it is my hope as an individual that in conducting these sessions with specific subsets and groups of students, staff and community members, that I can then better understand their experience. And that is my impetus for wanting to move forward in that direction. Just gonna add that. Go ahead, Dave.
No, Brandy, I totally agree. I mean, I try to do that really. But my, my, my counter on that is are we, it says to me, it sounds like, again, you know, I was wondering why I voted no. And it's like, we want to commit to being an anti-racist board. We're, are we, are we still set, set back saying that? Because the way it is worded, like, we only have a one-sided issue here. I mean,
Well, perhaps one way we could word is conduct listening sessions with students, families and staff members who have experienced racism in the Newburgh School District.
I mean, that take, to me, it takes away white, brown and black, which I, that's what I want to get away from. I I agree. I want to know about any staff member, kid, parent that's, you know, I said that a couple of weeks ago, very passionately that that if if we have a staff member treating kids like that, they gotta go. That's, you know, that's where.
You know, perhaps why that didn't stand out to me is because I've never known white folks to be discriminated against as a major issue that I've experienced in my life. And I've never experienced racial discrimination because of being a white person that I'm aware of. If if it happened, it was so subtle, I never even knew it was happening. I can see places where I've benefited from being white, and I wanted to hear and still want to hear from anybody who's experienced racism in our district.
I agree, Bob, and I I I think it's important that where we can, we use language that brings us together uh, rather than breaking us apart. Uh, and our communities had enough division over all this, like, let's use language that invites everyone in the community out to talk about this important subject and not hang a sign up that says no whites. I mean, that's essentially the the, uh, you know, the unspoken part of how we currently are phrasing it. And I I like the way you phrased it.
Then it's very likely that you will not hear from your communities of color, frankly. It's the, it's the way that these meetings operate, because often the the voices of the folks we always hear from are going to overshadow everybody else's voices, and they just won't show up. So I I hear what you're saying, but if you're specifically trying to understand the experiences of people who experience racism, those are your people, staff, students, families of color. As a white person, you can't experience racism because you are in the majority culture. It's a, it's a, it's part of the definition of racism. So it's, I think that the the challenge in all of this is that if you're trying to figure out where your system feels racist to, or the experiences of people of color who have felt that racism, then you have to ask that specific question. If you want to find out from other people how white people feel like they're experiencing racism, that is a different conversation. But if you do not specifically go, um, asking for and targeting groups that you know have experienced this because of the way of the world for hundreds, or even, as Dave put it, thousands of years, that we have to ask those people specifically. And that's why, that's why this is in here that way.
Yeah, and while I would support changing it to anyone who has been discriminated against, experienced discrimination in the Newburgh School District, I would not be supportive of just an open meeting where everybody came to talk about race. You know, to me, that would just be kind of what we dealt with here writ large and without structures and boundaries that could make it productive. You know, at least we all have defined roles in why we're here and what we're doing here and structures in how we operate. If if we were, if we were to do that, you know, I would want to meet with groups of folks, you know, whether they were Asian, Pacific Islanders, African Americans, Hispanics, Latinos, whatever group, if we had a group of white foot, white people who felt like they had been discriminated against, would want to hear about that, but not in just a general cattle call meeting.
Joe, I I just have to say, I I found your definition of racism to be outrageous. And that's not, in my mind, the definition of racism, then the idea that you can't have someone be racist against you because you're the majority, that's, that's absurd. It's absurd.
Would you define racism?
What?
How would you define racism?
I would define racism as attributing traits and stereotypes to an individual based on a perception of a group. That's what racism is to me.
Well, that's certainly an old, it's an older definition of racism that was current a long time ago. I I I think if we also are dealing here with the version of racism that says, uh, things that aren't even intended or not in, or or, um, are not based on somebody's supremacy over others, still affect people differently, affect people differently based on their ethnic and racial backgrounds. So that's another version. That's the more systemic racism we're talking about. And yeah, and even in individual relationships with, there are elements of, uh, I wouldn't call it overt racism, but certain really cer- really racism, where things are just are just treated differently. And so I don't think we can use the more limited version of racism because the word has expanded, and it's a problem. It makes it less clear what we're talking about when we talk about racism, but that's the way the language has gone. And the part that we, I'm concerned about is whatever parts of that end up with disparate outcomes that aren't based on anything, but they're primarily based on their ethnic or racial background. And that includes both systemic and white supremacy and inadvertent and all that kind of stuff. They're all, I think that this is umbrella term for all that now.
I'm about your guys' background on, you know, how we're all treated. And I know, you know, it's all over the place, and we live in a more protected area of Newburgh. I don't know, I don't know where you guys have traveled to, but I've traveled, and I've been treated completely racist by, you know, I hate the colors we keep throwing out here, but by black people, by brown people, by Asian people. Complete red. I I I feel like this gets back to like, the only people who are racist are the white people. Is that what we're saying?
No, I think what we're saying is we want to specifically focus on learning the experiences of people of color in our community so that we can better understand as a white majority board, their needs, their struggles, and so that we can help lead in a more comprehensive and inclusive way. That's what I see when I see that we're going to be conducting listening sessions with specific groups of people.
I agree, we should, I mean, if if kid, whatever situation we have to put people in, we gotta put them in a situation where they're gonna open up their heart and say it. So I agree with that. But I, it goes back to me that every single person needs to be talked to here. I mean, we're talking about our school district. You know, we weren't put here just to talk about kids that play sports or a color or anything. And when we say, when we keep using this, students, families of color, you know, we can invite them to a meeting and you can, you can say it in a way without having to do it all the time. But every, I've been treated awful by some of those groups, and I've been treated great by some of those groups. I've been treated awful by, you know, white people, and I've been treated great. I mean, it's like, that that goes, everybody's, you know, inherently sinful, and and their hearts are going to be mean. There is racism out there every which way but loose. And so when we voted as we need to listen to everybody in our school, if they, if they feel more comfortable doing it in a, in a group where they can be more open, Joe, I totally get that. I would support that a hundred percent. But I think, you know, we have to sit back and and we need to listen to everybody because what happens right now in our schools, and I'm telling you, after twenty years there, for an example, our s- our kids have been left out in the dark for way too long, because we have too many people who who make all these decisions as adults, and our kids don't get a strong enough voice. And then we, our staff will not say anything because they fear for their job. And if they stand up and they're, they're a dissenting vote like I did, they, they're going to lose their position. They're going to lose their hierarchy there to school. And so they don't say anything at all. I'm telling you guys, that happens across the board at Newburgh High School. And it's something, it's a real problem, because if they say it, you know, if they say, we don't like Joe's crazy socks, I'm not saying Joe would do that. I'm trying to make a dumb example that, you know, they're they're fearing that their administrator is going to, to drop them on the, on the pole a little bit. And it's happened. I've seen it over and over and over. That's a form of racism that we don't talk about.
And I want to bring it, I I want to bring it back and not negating your experiences, but I want to bring it back to us. We're we're on goal one, step one.
Don't put color in there. I mean, that's just, don't put color in there, just say all, and then we can segregate them or put them in different groups if we want to.
So we've heard Brian's, Brian, I'm assuming you have the same general view as Dave on that. We're going to just break it down to something really simple. If you don't want the word color in that sentence. You're muted.
I don't want to send out to the community that we only want to hear from people of certain races on a topic. That is divisive. Like, this is an explosive issue, and we, we have to understand that, you know. I don't want to have us be the cause of a backlash that divides this community further. I I want to approach these things in a way that unifies us.
Okay, so we've heard from Dave and Brian regarding this sentence. We, are there any other thoughts or ideas on wording around that?
Could, could Bob refresh, re- repeat his suggestion?
I've suggested changing the wording to conduct listening sessions with students, families and staff members who have experienced racism in the Newburgh School District.
Thoughts around that wording?
I mean, I wouldn't come and necessarily be open about the racism I've experienced because, one, I don't necessarily owe anybody anything about sharing my experience. Um, but if you, you really care about my experience, it would be specific and in more enclosed circle. A focus group like Joe mentioned.
I suppose that the proposal would allow us to do several groups and to try to construct them so people would be comfortable speaking. I'm not, I'm not happy about that. I would rather just leave it as the word, as it was written.
Maybe to be clear, you know, conduct focus group listening sessions with.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Missed, I missed Bob's suggestion. What did he say?
Uh, Greg captured it with the parentheses, focus group. Just to clarify that we're not looking to have a open call, you know, two hundred people come, uh, sort of meeting. It would be more focused by groups that have experienced racism, sharing their experiences, sharing their goals and hopes for the the district.
I'm not a board member, but one of the things that I'm observing is that some board members are operating from a perspective that racism is, the definition of racism that Brian gave is one that other board members would say is prejudice, and that racist is prejudice combined with a power structure to be able to enforce those prejudices. And I think that that would be part of the, the addition of that, or the changing of the warning to its in parentheses is not going to work unless we also define and agree on the difference between racism versus prejudice.
How much of our theory and our stuff right now, what you guys are thinking, is coming out of what we've heard in the last seven weeks?
Well, I I can say for me, it's, I've been hearing stuff about this for twelve, fifteen or twenty years. Uh, I've been slowly catching on to what people have been trying to tell me. And so it's not new, anything we've heard. I don't agree with that there is one definition of racism. I'm not sure Greg has it any better than anybody else. But the, he's describing the the version of it that's the worst problem is when discrimination is backed up by power structures.
Can we agree to add in the focused group listening session wording?
Yeah, I think the focus group sounds good. I I'm still strongly opposed to the the members' color. I mean, just.
I, I I don't think we're operating by consensus in this case, unfortunately. I would prefer to leave, I would, I would like the whole, the whole, every, all the words on there, without the period in the middle. If we're going to have that option, I think we need to focus on people of color at this point.
Why? Why can't we focus on everybody?
Because, as I just said, and as we've said several times, David, the people who we need to hear from the most are the people who have been on the outs and the power and the ability to influence the system around them. We can hear from, uh, we can hear from any such group. I don't think it, uh, we could, we could focus on anybody who's experienced a lack of power. But I think at the starting point here, to get started on this process, we have to focus at first on the people, minority groups who have historically and consistently in the world, I don't think it's just an American problem, that's where I agree with you, in the world, who have been left out of opportunity. I am a capitalist through and through, but capitalism only works for justice when people can start at the same starting line, and we are not doing that. So I'm not a socialist. I do not accuse me of that. This is necessary for capitalism to work the way it's supposed to, that people can start at the same place when they're born there. Nobody should be born and left in a hole. And right now, the evidence is clear that other, of the groups that we can identify, people of color are ones that are li- are starting behind and it's no fault of them. They were born into a situation where they had disadvantages for economic and historical reasons, and that's why we have to start with people of color. And I'll say that to any group who wants to challenge me on it, that I'm some kind of anti white racist. That's ridiculous.
So I I I'm just, I want to keep talking about it, Ron, and I hear some, I like some, I don't. So if a a black young man is born in Lake Oswego to a family of money, is he at a disadvantage?
Okay. We're talking, we, again, we're not going to be able to do this at the individual level and get it done. So we have to talk about groups where we have statistical evidence for the group. And that's why I'm talking about bell curves and the idea that the group as a whole is what we're going to have to be able to deal with to get this done. So you're right, but there might be a black family who are wealthy, who are not at disadvantage. We'll find that out when we talk to them. But if we don't invite them in groups that they can be comfortable speaking, we're not going to hear what we need to hear.
I agree about the comfortable speaking part. I've said that five times. I really agree with that, guys. But you guys, you know, this is something that's been out there for years right now. We're going through this, this phase, and it's a silly way of saying it, but for the last number of years, many, many years, this society, and you guys are all parents for the most part, we have been, everybody gets a ribbon society. Our kids have gotten.
Dave, I advise you not to go there. You're about to, you're about to offend a whole bunch of people, as if getting ribbons is something that's going on here.
It's true.
I wanted to bring us back to the language. I, we, I, all of these discussions are are great in their own ways and really illustrate that there's a lot of action steps we could be taking as a board over the coming year to really start having these conversations and education. And I will speak only for myself, Ron, I agree with you by taking out the period and the parentheses and having that as an entire sentence. And I'd like to get a, we know where Dave and Brian stand on this. I don't know where Rebecca, Bob or Inez are.
This is Rebecca. I agree with Ron and Brandy. I feel we need to to reach out to this, this mi- minority group specifically to hear what they've experienced. I feel we hear from the white majority group and that they're more able to, to come to board meetings and speak freely, and we need to to give the opportunity to the minority group. The people of color.
I mean, that's where I stand. I think we should take out the period and the parentheses and leave it as it is, but.
When's the last time you sat back, Rebecca, and talked to the the so-called white kids about this?
Dave, I really, I I don't want to cut you off.
Point I haven't heard from Bob.
Yeah, it's, I don't want to cut you off, Dave, and and these are good discussion points, but I, we really need to not focus on necessarily the minutia of every single thing, because we don't know what it's going to be yet, right? We haven't started on this, and I'm just trying to get a consensus on language at this point.
I know, Brandy, and I I I want to hear from every kid. I've said that in my statement, I say that today over and over and over. You guys don't seem to listen to me, that I want to hear from every brown kid, every black kid, every boy, every girl. I want to hear from every white kid. I want to hear from every kid. I've said it over and over, but you guys don't seem to hear that. You think I just keep coming back and I'm inherently, you know, racist, and and when we talk about all this stuff, because of white supremacy. and I'm inherently, you know, racist. And, and when we talk about all this stuff because of white supremacy and I'm not.
Nobody, nobody had said you're racist. Nobody said you're racist in this conversation, Dave. And I'm sorry if you're feeling that way. That is certainly not the intent. The intent is just to clearly define what our first action sort of step will be in this goal. That's it.
Then why can't we talk to, you know, everybody in groups?
Brandy, I want to hear, I think Bob was next to, to speak about this. And after that, I need another break. I can't with this.
Yeah, I need another break too. I'm getting really upset.
Yeah, I would suggest one thing, Dave, that's a struggle for me in, right now is you're, you're putting up a lot of what are called straw man arguments. You know, an argument that's not been made by somebody, but you're putting it up so you can tear it down and, and, and work at that rather than what folks have said. You know, in this meeting, I have not heard anyone call you a racist. So asking us to defend why we called you a racist is putting up a straw man and, and making me go into a corner that I never went into and don't have any desire to be into. So I would ask you to just be real careful about conflating what you may have heard from the community and what you're actually hearing in this meeting and the people you're talking to right now. You know, I would agree with what folks are saying. I would take out the, what I originally said and leave it with students, families, and staff members of color.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Greg, I know you got all that. Let's see, let's take a 10-minute break. Is that going to be enough for people? Or should we do 15? 10, 15?
10, 10 is good.
Let's meet back at 3:35. All right, it looks like we're missing just a few members, so we'll give it another couple minutes. Also, thank you, Greg, for answering and addressing the, the Q and A section. I have seen everybody's comments and questions, but purposely not addressing them in this meeting, but encourage everybody to email the board email address that Greg has put out. And thank you all for coming today too.
Do we have a lot of people there?
Yeah, let's see. Right now, we're up to 31, oh, so we have 22 attendees.
Goodness. Wow, great. Thank you very much for attending, spending your Saturday with us.
Record-shattering board retreat attendance. I thought that the, the one we had last two, three weeks ago was a great move in the right direction, but yeah, 22 is awesome.
I still say we should be selling ads. School district.
Little income coming in. All right, let's give Dave another couple of minutes.
Have they been sending in questions?
Uh, yeah, there's been a few. There's been maybe nine, if I'm looking at this correctly. But Greg's been really good, doing a really good job of answering or directing to an answer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Greg. Also, he gets a gold star for all the, the minutes he typed up from Thursday night meeting to be in the packet on Friday.
Yeah.
That was really appreciated.
And I just want to say again, I'm not capturing the comments from this meeting. There's no way to do that and share screen and keep up. So I just want to clear that those, those will not be in the minutes for this meeting. Is it still screen sharing?
Yes.
Yes.
And also on a, what I believe was a furlough day. Am I correct, Greg?
Uh, yesterday, yes.
Yeah. I was, I emailed Greg and within like two minutes, he got back to me and I was like, all right, you got to stop working. Because let's see, as I sent him more things to think about or do, so.
I don't know if Dave is going to come back, but I want to be respectful of everybody's time. Can we just get started again?
Yeah, sorry, just one second. I just got a call just from a kid. Sorry, I apologize about that. Yeah, I agree. Let's go and get started. And okay, number two. Board development and education focused on individual and group growth.
Is Joe with us?
Joe was with us. Yes.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm with you. I just had to stand up because I was so worried. So I'm here.
Um, a quick, just a couple of quick notes I put on underneath this that we can maybe discuss. Oh, shoot, sorry, my screen's going. Um, okay, so under board development and education focused on individual group growth, one bullet I had said examples could include, but are not limited to shared reading lists, speakers, and training for the board. Uh, the other, sorry, I'm going to see. I'll wait for Greg to catch up. And then the second bullet was conduct an equity audit slash assessment to collect and analyze information in order to determine the extent to which our district is equitable to each member of the community. And I think, Brian, this speaks to kind of what you were talking about earlier in the, the meeting about really looking at that data in a different way and questioning it a little bit in a different way.
So that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. That's it.
I can go into point four, which is extend our data.
Yeah.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't, maybe Joe, you can speak to how we would even go about this, but is there some way to commission, you know, some university or something to do an analysis of this district's data that, you know, to get all of the different intersectional factors accounted for so that we actually know what the achievement gap based on race in the district is? How would we go about that?
You want to control further variables, right?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, so we can certainly explore. We've actually, actually had those conversations with some universities around us to talk about those kinds of things. I mean, there are decades and decades of national studies who have all done that. So it's, it's not like a methodology would be, would be hard for them to determine because all of those continually show the, the same thing. So we could certainly commission someone to go through and do some controlled research of certain areas of, of the data we have, the, the stuff that stays the most consistent. We have a few years of consistent data. Unfortunately, most of it comes from our state assessments because that's the most consistent data we have for a certain period of time. Because of course those tests have changed as well, but we can certainly find out from some more conversations with university folks if they would do that.
And do we have data that we could also do for things like discipline and for, I, I don't know if grades make sense to do? Maybe?
Uh, yeah, we have, of course, the discipline data, all the stuff that we have in our data systems and, and, you know, I, I would have to make sure that one of our challenges, of course, is that, is that we have not, I think historically, not everybody has put in their discipline data in the same way. And that's one of our big challenges, just from a data perspective, uh, which is something we actually have been working on to, to have consistent definitions. That's something we worked on in the summer of last year and coming into this fall to have our student parent handbooks reflect a consistent discipline policy and procedure. And then we would also report them in the same way. That was one of the inconsistencies from our past is that they're, they're measured in different ways, or at least they're said in different ways or put into different categories. And so you don't have the same kind of level of that. So there is some disparate data depending upon the year and the school and things like that. But that's, that's why we've worked on that recently. But yes, that's, all of those things would go into it. Grades are a little more challenging because they're sometimes arbitrary, sometimes, I mean, they're totally different by every single teacher. And so those are, those are. Um, and so those are, those are harder to use as a, as a standardized measure.
Sure.
One thing, and when we're talking about data and this kind of cuts across several, several of our goals, one thing which I would love to see us have staff start working on is some sort of a, a data portal in, on our district website, you know, where anybody can come and kind of see what the data that we're tracking is, you know, I understand we need to be careful about, you know, that it can't be personally identifiable, but you know, one of the, I'm a, I'm a big believer that data should always be open as much as possible. And I, I would love to see us find ways to make more, more data more accessible to folks on our website. And that would help us with, you know, our work around equity, it would help us with our work around, you know, overall learning goals, safety, you know, I think that could be beneficial in a lot of ways.
Okay, are there any, does any board members have any suggestions for language around number two?
I would like to see something of like what the assistant principal from Edwards suggested and um, some training for the board that we, we seem to at times be talking um, past one another. And if we can get um, training on, on anti-racism or culturally um, opening ourselves to, to the same language. That would be worth, worthwhile, I think.
Rebecca, can I read you right, what we have right now? Cause I know, I don't know. It's, I, I got a little teeny glimpse of what it's like to be Rebecca in our policy committee meetings, because it goes so quickly and I'm trying to keep up visually and it is all but impossible at times. And it's very frustrating. So Rebecca, I wanna make sure you know the language we're speaking of as we go on this. So this is number two, commit to becoming an anti-racist board. Board development and education focused on individual and group growth. Examples could include a reading list, speakers and other training options.
Okay.
Does that encompass what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, no, that does. Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I would wanted to specifically say training around what an equity lens would look like. And so we have a, a same baseline of terms we're using. Um, or same baseline of understanding, because the part of the problem throughout this retreat has been that we don't understand words the same way.
Been to who? How do we, how do we pick who does this training? Because a few years ago, we did this in the school district at a tremendous expense um, at Shattontown Valley Middle School. And it was very one-sided in its look at things. There are some good things that happened in there. There are some tough things that happened in there. So how do we go about picking that? Who, who are the, the reading list of speakers?
So that's a great question, Dave. And I have, as we've kind of started this work a little bit, I've been compiling a list in my head, people to reach out to when it's time for us to start on some of these specific like speaker and training things. Um, I think we potentially could have a good resource in Bryce Cofield. He was the speaker on Thursday night from George Fox. I don't remember the exact department that he said he worked in. Ron, I don't know if you know, but it was something.
I say he worked in the cultural center, didn't he? The cultural exchange.
Kind of like intercultural.
I, I should know this. Uh, culture is in his title.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
I don't know the title, sorry.
I think reaching out to George Fox could be a great place to start. I know they also have a fairly active peace department. Um, I think David has given us a lot of resources. He could be somebody who could have some potential networking connections. And also I think Joe, he's done some of this work in Lake House We Go in the past and has a connection right in his own home to somebody who deals with equity in, in an educational setting. So those are my thoughts so far. Not to say that that wouldn't change or evolve.
I would assume, I mean, Ness, Ness would have some connections through her work as well, possibly.
I do. And I can provide that list to you, Brandy.
Rice is assistant director of the Intercultural Resource Center at George Fox.
Intercultural Resource Center.
That was twenty syllables. I got two of them, right.
Cultural, yeah, so, um, I haven't, that, that's where I'm at on that so far. Okay, are there other wording issues on number two that we would like to talk about? Okay, let's move on to number three. Create an equity lens to be used as a tool in board decisions. Thoughts on wording?
Uh, Joe's little description was very helpful to me already. And I don't know that I have anything else to add. Since he has a, that's a fairly specific idea, concept of what he's talking about there.
Okay. Uh, number four, update and extend our data on variable outcomes, rates, ethnicity, et cetera. Conduct an equity audit assessment to collect and analyze information in order to determine the extent to which our district is equitable to each member of the community. There are suggestions for wording or additions to that?
I, I guess I'm a little thrown off by the each member of the community part.
Wouldn't it be better to just end after equitable or?
Each student or, we're looking at student data, right?
I'm, I'm focused on students, yes. That's what concerns me on that.
I mean, it's, you know, for
There, an objection to changing it to each student?
Well, it depends upon what you're, what, I guess what you're asking. Um, so it does say variable outcomes. So if we're talking about specifically about outcomes, then that's achievement is an outcome. Um, if you'd like to know about equitable access, that may be larger for the community. You know, we, we do some things like we translate each document that goes out as a, for instance, that is attempting to create some equity and access. And so I, it really is, if you're asking only about extending the data on variable outcomes, uh, then that's specific to student achievement. Then that's okay. Then I would actually agree with Brian that you would, that you would take the, it would be each, you know, uh, member of our student body or just each student. But if you're asking a broader question about equity of access to all of the services that we provide, that would be a different question.
Well, I do want one that's about students. And so, but I don't mind, you know, obviously it makes sense if, to, to make sure that the community to want to access the, uh, what we do, that we pay some attention to that. I, I, I prefer that was a separate point, because I don't wanna lose the focus on students.
Can you, hey Joe, can you give some examples of what some of those other things that we do for members of the community are that we would look at potentially disparities on? Just so I, like, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding uh, what we're referring to there.
Sure. So, um, which ways do we, how do we set up as a, for instance, meetings for uh, families and parents in the evening? And what do we consider on those? What do we make? What kind of meeting parameters do we set up in case barriers come? As a, for instance, do we offer childcare and snacks to each one of the meetings? Because that's something that, that, that broadens that, that ability for people to come and to engage. Um, do we provide interpreters? Do we provide audio transcripts? Do we make it easily accessible for folks to know where to pick up lunches as a, for instance? You know, how, how do we get the messaging out? Is it paper? Is it electronic? Is it email? Is it WhatsApp? Is it text? Um, you know, are we keeping track of all of our modes of communication to make sure we're, we're reaching each community uh, within the community equitably? So that's, that's the, the, probably the broader part of it. You know, what, what, what ways do we engage different segments of our community? Because they do actually require, you can't do it equally. You have to do it differently and equitably to reach uh, members of our community within the community. And so that was, that was my question. Is this, is this the broader question about how we, as a district are intentionally creating access points? And although under number four, this is specific to Ron's point, this is about, about student outcome, because achievement is only outcome really. That process. So that's, I guess that's what, that's some of the things I would think about.
Well, I was thinking about outcomes in terms of other things we collect data on, like, uh, discipline and bullying and harassment cases or whatever else we'd cut data on. But that's all, I, again, I was all focusing primarily on students at this point. Uh, I think it's worth having a separate point on the other parts of our interaction with the community.
I, I would agree chiefly because I don't think we have a lot of data on those other things. So that's more of a a discussion, maybe, you know, under, under number one, maybe. Unless I'm missing that we do have data on that stuff that you mentioned, Joe. I mean, do we have any data on that stuff?
I'm not sure we'd call it data, but we do, you know, we ask questions of people, but we do it in a survey. Again, survey is a very culturally focused thing. They may not reach everyone that we want to reach. I think we could probably make a list of the ways that we try to be equitable, but I think uh, we would have to do some uh, deeper questioning of our communities uh, who we don't serve as well to find out what other ways are we not getting the message to them? How are we not including them? How do we include them better or more? Right? So we have, we have our Latinx group that meets, um, well, was meeting, you know, about monthly. And so that group uh, had begun to grow a bit, but we know there are far more at twenty percent. There are a thousand Latinx kids in our, in our school. So how are we reaching out to reach that twenty percent? Cause we don't have twenty percent of people responding to our survey who are necessarily, who would who would identify as Latinx. So, you know, how do we, how do we, I think that the, it'll be data we would have to begin collecting based upon metrics. We would decide, these are the metrics we wanna hear from. Right? We'd say, here are the metrics, then let's find some, we'll start to collect whatever that data looks like. And we have some information, of course, again, from surveys and and those kinds of things. We have that information, but beyond that, we don't have a lot of data.
My concern too, I think it is certainly valid and important data to look at beyond just the students and the, and to look specifically to access. But I am a little concerned that, um, you know, this is one of our goals for one school year. And I would be hesitant to add more data collection onto it at this point. I think it's certainly something that we should look into building upon and continuing. Um, but I'm, if I'm just being honest, thinking about our goals strictly for the next coming school year, I think it might be too much.
So are you thinking we should just change that to student and call it a day?
That's fine, from my perspective. At this point, like I said, it's not a, this is certainly not a stopping point. This is just a starting point.
Sure.
Is anybody not comfortable with doing that?
Okay. Uh, Ron, I'm gonna let you speak to number five, which is research other districts.
Well, uh, I was looking for something else and I ran across North Clackamas, uh, which claims in their, on their webpage that they have not only improved graduation rates overall to the high eighties, that they have almost eliminated most of the achievement gaps. I wanna know about that. And what I know so far is what I just told you, not much. But it occurred to me that there may be, and that's just right nearby, there may be other districts whom we could go visit or at least virtually. And say, what's going on here? How are you doing this? And how do you know you're not, I mean, somebody's not just fudging data like the schools in DC and Atlanta or someplace where they were just fudging their data. And, uh, and so, I mean, that's it's right there. And I mean, I'm, I'm kind of, I gotta watch myself. I can't volunteer for everything, cause I don't know that I will be unemployed the whole, this, just the whole school year. But if I got nothing better to do, I'd be willing to go do, do tours of these places.
Ron, it's totally coincidental, but I actually spoke with the North Clackamas chair this morning. And she kind of alluded a little to it. And she said the first, it's been a multi-year board ever. Um, and the first two or three years were pretty, pretty uncomfortable and difficult, but she felt like they were finally making some progress on it. So I think they'd be more than willing to speak with other people about it. Yeah. Do you like what Greg has captured on there?
Uh, yeah, uh, although it doesn't have to be just achievement gap, but that's the one I was looking at most, yes. To reduce disparities is what I would say.
Does anyone have any ideas or suggestions around that language?
I like it.
I like it too.
Captures a larger.
Okay. Uh, so number six, improve fair, fair start for each student. Ron, this was one of yours as well, although we did talk about a little bit. Does anybody have, uh, language suggestions around that?
Well, I, I have a suggestion around the same sort of area. Um, and I, I, I can't take credit for this idea, because this, I believe, was originally raised in one of our meetings by Bob. Um, but it's the idea of, you know, some of our students, um, who have specialized needs, we give them individual education plans. And why don't we do that for every student? And have an education plan that follows that individual student through their entire educational career and is updated and allows, because it feels sometimes like, uh, there's a little bit of a missed opportunity in the handoff between grades. And we certainly see that, like the middle school drop off, right? And that might help to alleviate some of those, uh, problems that we see.
I was thinking of fair start specifically only for sort of like pre-K, but I'm, I could be off in that assumption. Ron, what was your kind of intent?
It, it's, it's a little bit fuzzy, I have to admit. Uh, pre-K is a, is a natural way of thinking about it, but really our schools, you know, there's no way that I think we can expect them all to arrive at the starting line at the same time. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna have to expect to have ongoing efforts for those who arrived at the starting line behind. And, um, so I don't know that's just pre-K. A fair start doesn't catch all that either. So.
Yeah, that was certainly not the way I was thinking about it. I think, Ron, what I interpreted from what you said is people are starting at different, at different areas, which is what is increasing those achievement gaps or opportunity gaps.
Right.
And I think one way to improve that is by allocating the proper resources to make this happen. Depending on where each student is starting.
Yeah, I agree. And so, uh, it'd be nice if we could get them to the starting line in the same place, but we're not gonna make it. And so how can we help ongoing ways, in ongoing ways to get that start to turn out to have been fair at some point? Actually, I, I think it has said it better than I did, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm driving at.
So what do you see, not just you, Ron, or even as the board, what does the board see as a sort of action items within that or, or measurable? Is that something we wanna kind of have on here so that it's on our mind throughout the year? Or is it something that we wanna actually have more information on or action on?
Well, in the ideals, in the ideal world, we'd have people, even maybe, I don't know who, uh, ta, some kind of task force, pay attention to this issue and making recommendations to us about what we need to do. I don't have, I haven't researched this enough to know what the, what, what would be the general tools and which ones apply to us. I don't know that. So I don't have any specifics, unfortunately, which would make this a lot better, but I don't.
Can somebody give me an example of how that would look for a student?
Well, in my uninformed view, it would be, well, one level, I mean, if we can't reach into the pre-K realm, which I don't, we, we don't have the money for that. But if, if, if we identify some kind of initial assessment uh, that we have groups of students who are that we have groups of students who are coming in without the reading readiness that other students have, we take those non-reading readiness students. And I don't know this has to be based on the distance, it has to be on how they got to the starting line. We take these non-reading ready students and we we put extra work into them until they caught up with their reading level. I mean, that would be an example. Some of that kind of stuff already goes on, I know. And I just want us to be creative about trying to identify the ways that people don't arrive at the starting line equally and addressing every place when people were behind.
Ron, I remember several months ago, I brought that up and kind of got shot down. Maybe I didn't say it the right way. But, you know, I agree, when a kid comes in, if they can't so they can't their English skills are super low. And I was saying, you know, overload their schedule a little bit so they can get caught up quicker because that's a that's a key component. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that might be one that might be one solution. I don't, like I said, mostly I'm I'm just wanting us to make this an important point of focus. I don't really have specifics. That's that sounds like it could be a possibility. I don't know.
I mean, this is where we were talking about the reimagining education. And if we really want to be an anti-racist board, changing our resources and our funds in a way that would make it a more fair start or put people on the similar line in terms of getting anywhere in their education. Is it? Isn't that what we were talking about? And I know that, Joe, you mentioned a little bit of what that would look like in terms of practical things.
Right. And that's, you know, that's it depends upon, I'm I'm sort of assuming that when we're talking about the fair start that we're talking about our youngest students coming in. And so there are certainly ways for us to look at, you know, how we fund, what the number of students are at different levels. You know, do you want to look at smaller numbers of kids at kindergarten as a precedent, and then clustering students who need certain kind of support and then adding adult support to that. So you have, you know, more than one adult working with the smaller groups. So that's certainly also an equity lens for us to consider, you know, what what in what ways can we help students who are struggling to at the beginning? Yeah.
The way I'm potentially picturing this and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but you know, if if we're able to get to a point during this coming school year where we can put on our agenda, you know, maybe a parentheses after the agenda item and say, goal one or gold one, one A or whatever, just so that we're kind of as a board constantly being reminded of what does this report fit in? Why? Why are we having this report? And so under this specific number six, the fair start for students, I'm already imagining that there's several reports that we get traditionally throughout the year. Inform us on the workaround goal. And again, I think this is a starting point that we could build off of as it evolves. Am I off on this?
That sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Is it, Brandy, would it be like if you like what Brian said earlier? So I mean, are we just talking about our kids in kindergarten here or first grade or second grade? Or I mean?
No, I think it would. I think like what Joe said, it probably focused mostly on the younger students, especially at first, but not necessarily. I think depending on what the report was or what the information that we were getting was, it may focus on different ages or brackets or groups of students. Like if Ann comes and gives us gives us a presentation on inclusion, on IEPs. But I I don't think it would be just kind of gardeners. That's not what I'm thinking. Anyway, I don't know.
Yeah, I was thinking like, you know, for me, like what Brian was saying too about the like, if you think fair start, you're kind of going, okay, like Ron said, everybody's going to come to that starting line. But if we had a way where we had a student plan, you know, where we're looking at every child coming through. And then all of a sudden, you know, they're doing, let's say, grade level work until fourth grade, and all of a sudden their math skills go south. That that would be a, you know, flag so we could help that 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 child out and the family out to 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 get them back on track where they're at. And what I've seen at the high school, almost every time when kids have been at grade level and then they they drop low, you know, their grades start to dip and everything. I know at the high school a good job about catching those kids quick enough. And there's so many different reasons. It could be a family issue. It could be a it could be that they're just not working very hard. It could be the friend group they're in. It could be, you know, a lot of different factors, but we don't catch that soon enough. So I just think going back to Brian's statement, that fair start could almost go all the way through if we were just kind of assessing those kids all the way, we could catch them before they fall too far.
Okay, good point. Do is there is there more discussion around the the actual wording of number six? Also, Rebecca, do you need me to read it at this point?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
So it looks like there's question marks around, let's see, students come to the district at different starting points, allocate resources to help student gain more equitable starting points. But do we want resource accesses or access? Or the quote of help every student have what is needed to meet educational standards? There's a few different resource options there.
I'm content with something more general, just say, address, I thought I had something and it's not going to come out. Address the needs of students to help them gain more equitable starting points. I don't know, something like that. I don't I don't have specifics in mind. Sometimes it'd be resources. Well, obviously, everything has something to do with something to do with resources. Sometimes it's resources. Sometimes it might be just a different program available or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think the the principle that we want to make sure each student is starting off at a fair place where they're at, you know, the level they need to be in order to succeed. And of course, that takes resources and you know, fair access and all that. All that is wrapped into it. I don't think we need individual components. We just need to say what the goal is. Be my view on it.
I generally agree with that.
Ron, not only are you the wordsmithing guru of the group at this point, but this was also your goal. So I'm really I want you to, I wanted to encompass what your original sort of thoughts were and after hearing the board's input.
So my goal is for everybody to forget it was my goal. And if it, oh, I was about to say something really snarky. If it's badly written, maybe they'd forget. Ah, see how terrible that and and I'm not saying it's badly written. I'm in deep hole. Can you just let me get out of this and
All right.
I'm not, I'm not upset. I think it's fine. One of the any of these options are fine with the board thinks.
Okay. I would be fine with taking away the bracket before students and adding a period after starting points.
I agree. That's fine, too. I like it.
It's okay. Everyone's okay. We, okay, right. Okay, number seven, create an individual education plan for every student in Newburgh public schools. I don't know if that belongs under this specific goal, maybe more under the learning goal. That's just my initial thought.
Well, thi- this is one really that covers a lot of territory. So, you know, when we talk about reimagining education, this this could be a real key element of that. I just I love the idea. I think it's a great idea, you know, I like calling it a personalized learning plan rather than an individual education plan because that has a legal definition. But I I want us to be real clear that 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 one bullet point is a huge undertaking. And would even with a lot of effort would probably be a multi-year thing to to enact. I think it's worth pursuing, but I think that's something where we would need to be really conscientious as a board that that's something we want to ask staff to put time into because that's a huge request to put onto our staff.
So do we want to let Joe speak to? Obviously, there are a lot of challenges. It's a that's a big, big ask, and I get that. And I think everyone understands that. But Joe, do you want to speak to the challenges around that and how how that could potentially come to being?
I can just say it simply, we won't be able to make that happen this year. It's just not with everything we have going on right now. You know, among the the COVID stuff that's happening and figuring out how to do a hybridized system and or not, or an in-person or and a distance learning thing, we just frankly won't have the capacity to do something like that because that really that truly is a massive undertaking. It's not just keeping track of stuff in a neat little folder. It's a it's a pretty significant undertaking and there are lots of parts to it. So it's not a goal that I can achieve for next year in any way, shape or form.
Well, even if it's achievable in this year, I mean, it's something that we could certainly start the process on, isn't it?
I guess it would depend on what I'm not sure what the goal of a personalized learning plan is. I mean, that's that's not the, we've not had enough of that conversation about what what it is that you're trying to achieve through that. So that would be different than the grading and tracking systems for we how we see students do and the work the teachers do when they finish a grade and they come together and they try to to balance class loads and gets kids forward and bring them stuff. So I'm not sure what the what the additional goals of this personalized learning plan would be.
Well, how about this? For a student that's on IEP, what is the goal of the IEP?
Oh, I think they're all different, right? Depending on what the IEP is.
Depending on the disability.
Right. So IEPs have goals that are specifically written to address barriers that are presented by a very specific list of disabilities. And so those things are they and they could be emotional goals, behavior goals, they can be academic goals. And so those kinds of things that they're specifically targeted working on in a very narrow definition. And it's pretty significant process that brings in lots of staff members. So it's also, as Bob mentioned, a part of the legal requirement for students who are identified for special education.
Well, I would think the goal would be to for each student at the individual student level to identify the challenges and barriers to learning for that individual student.
Yeah, that would be that'd be great. I think that there's there's got to be a recognition of the amount of time and energy that IEPs as a specific thing take and how many people are involved in those things. You know, you'll have anywhere from three to seven staff members or more who are part of it. And so it's not part of our, if we want to look forward into doing that, then we're going to have to look at restructuring our week and how much time we spend with students and how much time we spend with this kind of work, because this is a fairly significant. It's not a bad idea. I want to be clear about that. I there are so lots of merits to it, but I think we also have to be cognizant of the the workload of doing that. And then what does that look like for the amount of time that we spend serving students? And then the amount of time we send spend serving our documentation and our work on those things. I mean,
The part of this idea that tracked to me was not that we would do an IEP for everybody because I knew the staff that would just like triple our staff requirements. But but is there some kind of, could we develop some kind of a lower tech, no, no, lower, lower intensive, lower intensity model that we'd use for students? And I know some of that kind of stuff kind of already goes on. And maybe this is an ask for an improvement on stuff. So for me, the the value given this year, this is not the best time to be doing this, but the value for this is to just have it on a list of you know, things we'd like to pay attention to at some point. Is there some way to enrich our individualized planning for students?
Yeah, you know, for me, this is something which I've thought about for a long time, but is still vague on, you know, I couldn't give you a good definition of what a personalized learning plan was. So seeing it in here as a goal for this year that as we have it here, that's way too big, way too ambitious, even if that was the only thing we put on there. Like, like Ron said, keeping it as a discussion as something we think about and kind of dwell on. What what could that look like? What should that look like? But having it as a goal to me feels distractingly ambitious.
Well, what if we changed it to begin the work of thinking about and designing a system whereby we provide a personalized learning plan for every student? You know, I I totally get that we're not going to be there at the end of the school year. I get that. But we have to start somewhere. We, if we think it's a good idea, if we think that this could greatly impact student achievement, and I do, why not at least start on it?
I still think this should be under the next goal of B for learning, but
I I agree with Brandy.
Which goal?
Okay, can we make it number three under B?
Sure.
Okay, okay. All right, can we move on to B? We've got forty-five-ish minutes. I think we can do it. Okay. B, learning. Number one, community outreach regarding calendar and start times. Form an ad hoc committee to study long-term changes to start time and calendar changes. Any thoughts on the wording or the goal?
So I think we've been playing around with calendar changes because of COVID, COVID during calendar changes anyway. So how much more is this than that we're already doing? I think that's a question for Joe.
Well, we already talked about putting together an ad hoc committee for changes to the start time. Of course, everything kind of went out the window, but we still talked about doing that as we look forward to the following school year twenty so we want to make sure we do that. And then, you know, we could still talk about calendar changes. And there has been some discussion among the board and the community about looking at a different kind of calendar for us to consider just whether that's year round, whether that's partially year round, whether that's having two split up breaks instead of one longer break. So but yeah, that's, I mean, that's something that I think we need to get that because if we're going to make those changes, if we were going to make a change as a, for instance, to start times, general start times for levels of school. You know, we need to have that probably finalized by, I don't know, December before we all head off to a little bit of break because we have to give our community enough time to adjust, you know, their lives and whatever situation they're in and thinking about that kind of stuff. And we want to have plenty of kind of public input during that fall. Even though it'll be a little bit hairy anyway with just how we're running school, but I think what is important for us to, I mean, that's something that we've talked about. So I don't think it's a problem for us to work on.
Yeah, you know, I'm a big believer that anytime we're going to make a significant change in how we operate our schools, we need to have a lot of community input. You know, because this is one where, you know, I've been clear and I'll be really clear. I would love to see us go to some sort of a year-round schooling system. I really believe that our summers off is a antiquated holdover from a whole different era that really doesn't serve us well today. But that's, that's my opinion. I I would want to make sure that the community felt like that suited their needs and having this committee look at that would be a good way to start getting that discussion going to see if that is something that would be would be helpful to the Newburgh community.
So I guess my question would be, what are the qualities that we want this committee to consider when they're making this decision?
I think that goes back when we had this conversation a while back. I believe it was Bob who brought it up that the committee once formed would need to create specific sort of guidelines, you know, whether that's a timeline or specific areas that they're looking into. And you know, as a board, when that committee is formed, I think it's appropriate to give some guidance, but also I think it's important to balance it and let the committee form some of their own sort of direction.
Sure.
Right. Answer your question.
Yeah, but I guess that guidance is what I'm what I'm trying to get at with my question is what is the guidance that we're giving this committee as far as what it is we want them to come back to us with, what we want that to be based on in their process. I think it would be wise to put some detail into that.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bob. No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, when we originally talked about this, it was specific to changing the start times at the high school with the understanding that that has an impact with all the other schools. So changing the start times of our schools. So changing the start times of our schools. You know, it's adding in the long-term changes to the school calendar. That kind of sped up, uh, when we went to the hybrid model and COVID and looking at changes. You know, this group, I don't see them, it, it wouldn't be helpful to have them try and, and have input onto this coming school year. But now that things have been disrupted, it just seemed like a, uh, an advantageous time to really take a look at school calendars. Um, and just come back to us with a, with their recommendation. And what Brandy was saying, we, we have not used committees, um, outside committees, ad hoc committees, community members very much as a board uh, in my time. And so it's something which I really want us to do more of. But I also really believe that because we haven't done it, we don't have a structure for it. We don't have kind of group norms established. So I really think that the committees that we, you know, this one being the first, whatever other committees have a, a real defined charter. You know, what, what they're, and I see that coming from them, what, after we've given them the broad, uh, broad strokes. But, uh, a timeline, uh, uh, who, who they're going to be, who the members should be, um, so that we're getting a cross-section. My concern is that if we just say, hey, let's get a committee, we'll call the names that are top of the list. And we'll get the kind of the, the people who are, you know, very valuable, very, uh, heavily involved in the community. But, um, are the kind of go-to folks who would be the first up on something like this. I'd rather see us get a much broader swath of folks that, um, haven't had a, a, a voice at the table before.
I think it's really, so Bob, to your point, I'm sorry, Brandy, we were time.
Go ahead.
Just quickly, and I, I think both to Bob and to Brian's points, um, you have to give some clear instruction about what you're asking them to bring back to you. I've done several of these in the past, and so I've, I've got some ideas around some structured things that'll help you. You know, some simple things like, do you want, is there a limit to how much money it can cost the district to move to something else, right? So you can set some limits like that. You can set the limit on the amount of time when you want them to bring back the report. You can say, here are the things we need to hear from you. So you can get back, so you don't send them off, uh, into the hinterlands to work on something and then they come back with something that doesn't meet the, the goals that you have as a board. So the information goals that you need. So, yeah, it's really important to certainly give them those, uh, those pre-structures ahead of time. Here's your charter. Here's what we're expecting to see. And here's the timeline and here's some of the parameters that we, that we won't do. And that can even include, how do you choose your ad hoc committee? So that committee should include members from of a and those forever. So they know that there's.
So the wording of that.
Yeah, I have one thing to add to that. Um, and as I said a long time ago, uh, Bob said a long time ago, you know, we've had this discussion a few different times. It could be an opportunity since we do need to be slow on this with, especially now with COVID and everything. We have a little bit more time. How is, how is this going, this, this going to look other than just times? I mean, could we be looking at a different way we do school? Not just because of COVID, but maybe better systems in place that would improve our, our work with kids. So we're still operating on the same system we basically did when we were all in school, you know, that. One thirty to eight to two thirty to three type of model. Go through this, as Brian, you know, we could kind of at least start the basics of this, come back to the, the board and, and just kind of get some, some stuff down kind of loosely. And then we could have Joe look at it, what he, what his expertise. But I mean, school could look different down the road when we go to make this time plan. Maybe that's a good thing.
Yeah, I agree. I think Bob, or no, sorry, Bob, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that some of what you just touched on actually leads us really well into number two under this goal of what will this next year sort of look like? And of course we don't necessarily know, although guidelines are coming out and the closer we get, the more it feels like a model is being constructed. But I, I hear what you're saying about, yeah, thinking about the entire system looking different. Do?
Before we move on from number one, do we want to try and record some of our thoughts around what we want them to come back with? And I'll just throw out an example, like one I want them to look at is what the scientific research says around, you know, the, the brain at that age and what is best for the, the child's outcome.
So I think we're going to have to have a board resolution and a regular meeting to create this, this ad hoc committee. And I think that would be a good time to discuss it since we still have quite a bit to do and we're running out of time here. That's what I would say.
That's fine. We can, we can put off to another day, I suppose.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so number two was pretty vague. We hybrid model, hybrid learning model, uh, how do we measure success and health of the system? What are we using to measure that success? How do we support the district in this work? And how do we track and measure equity programs reaching underserved populations? So that's a lot, a lot of questions. I don't know if anybody has any answers or clarity on any of those points.
Sounds to me like the, it sounds to me like the goal here is for the board to, uh, carefully assess, uh, the hybrid learning model on a variety of issues, including whether it works as a learning experience and access and equity. Uh, but the goal is that the board closely value, evaluate or something, the hybrid learning model. Isn't that correct? And the rest of these are questions about how we do that. Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
No, I would agree with that. Yeah.
Are, are you thinking it would be different than how we analyze the, the current systems performance?
Uh, well, maybe there's, maybe we focus on, I mean, it's because it's a specific thing for this year. We don't know how much of it's going to endure. So you, so I think it would have somewhat different dimensions than just the routine. It's kind of on top of the routine in a sense. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm just not sure what, what we can do outside of what we normally do. And I'm absolutely in favor of finding new ways to evaluate what we do. The problems we have is that we, we don't have enough information most of the time to make a good informed decision.
So.
I just don't know what it is.
Right. I agree. And, and I, I think what I envision is taking, you know, I'm going to have to take these things, kind of run out of time to get some of the details worked out. I would like to have it listed as something we'd like to work on. But I don't have the details worked out. We would have to set a time probably in August sometime in a board meeting, something like that to work out what we want to track. So they could be tracking it while, while, while it's running.
So for the, for the goal in here, do we, it, would it be beneficial to leave these as questions? So that we are thinking of them throughout the year or would that sort of counteract the point of a goal?
It's not quite pretty, but I think it works. And if you look at my desk, this seems to be my operating system.
I, I mean, I think they would be good questions for us to keep in mind throughout the year as we are going through this hybrid model. Okay. Are there more thoughts or, or wording on number two? No? Okay. And number three, we definitely talked a lot about, but is there anything else you want to add on? Anyone wants to add on convenient a study group to examine how a personalized learning plan could be created for every student? Wilson does. Okay. Can we move on to C, Bond?
Brandy, can I comment a little bit? It's been a long meeting and I'm emotionally exhausted. My brain is fried. I don't know that I can continue thinking about more goals. I propose that we set up another meeting to talk about D and, or C and D. I can't even talk straight anymore. Um, I'm just not effective right now if I can't think clearly.
For example, we have a relatively short agenda, maybe depending on how long Joe's report is on Tuesday. Could we finish it on Tuesday?
I'm comfortable with that. Is everyone else comfortable with that?
That would be my preference outside, instead of scheduling another meeting. We've been having a lot of meetings lately, so. I'd rather do it then.
Um, is Craig, Craig's not on my screen, but I'm assuming he's on here. There he is. Greg, since the packet has already gone out, if we add that, will that, uh, how much will that affect your work? Will you have to just send out a new packet and will we still be in compliance with public notification?
Um, we always make our agendas that we post, uh, generic that business items might include. And you always have the right to do as you did today and change the agenda in the meeting. So probably the, I mean, the absolute cleanest way would be to do what you just did now at the meeting Tuesday night and say, we're adding to the agenda discussing C and D. It's probably okay that we just did it now, but it'd be great to probably do it again that night.
Yeah, I, I think we have to make a motion that night to amend the agenda. Yeah, we should be, we should be fine.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that. The board's comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
I think it might've been on more than one person's mind.
Yeah, I'm just addressing my needs.
Good. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, we will end at four thirty-four and we will continue the discussion on C and D. Again, thank you, board members, of course, for spending another four hours in service to our students and to all the participants who came and watched the process. So thank you. And I hope everybody has a really relaxing Sunday and a good rest of your weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.